We could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Pledge of Allegiance always sounds so nice when there's so many people here to recite it with us, so I appreciate that. Tonight is a busy meeting. We're going to start off the meeting by doing our reorganization of the school committee. So at this time, we'd like to throw out some nominations for the chair.
I would like, it is my honor and privilege to nominate Barbie Lenares for chair of the school committee for the upcoming school year 2015-2016. She's done an incredible job to date, and I have tons of faith in her.
Thank you, Pam. Are there any other nominations? No? Okay. It's my pleasure to...
You need a second?
Okay.
Oh, so I...
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I appreciate that nomination, Pam.
I appreciate you serving.
Thank you. So the next item up will be for vice chairman, which I would like to take the opportunity to nominate Pam Lundquist.
Thank you. I would accept.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I can nominate myself.
Okay. The next will be the clerk. I would like to nominate Michael Hinchliffe as the clerk. Do you accept?
I do.
Thank you for that.
Any one second?
A second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the school's attorney. As chair, I would like to appoint attorney Naomi Stormberg as the Georgetown School Committee's legal counsel for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to appoint the law firm of Sullivan, Nuttall, and McAvoy as the Georgetown School Committee's special education legal counsel for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Appointment of subcommittees as well as alternates. Thank you for filling all that. All the forms out for us. We appreciate it. Did they have an opportunity to look at these, or is this the first time? Laura? Has it... This is the first time?
I've not seen it before.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to look? Okay. Okay. Um, can we do it in one? Do we have to do each one?
No, I think if you do it in one.
Okay.
Unless there's somebody who disagrees with some part that you want to pull out.
Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the budget and finance subcommittee for 2015-2016 as Barbie Lenares, Michael Hinchliffe, and Laureen Polignoni, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Can we do them all at once?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay. All right, let's do that. Okay. There's no alternate on here for...
Right, because you had talked about the three of you wanted to be on it in that particular subcommittee.
Okay. So you don't think we're going to need...
Well, I don't know. I was gonna, I'm checking on that to see whether or not you can have three. The last conversation I had, they said you could have three as long as you're hosting the meetings.
Okay.
But I don't know, if you have three on there, I don't think you want an alternate, because then you're really going to have one other person that you're not involving in it. So if you're all three going to plan to come to the meetings, then we just would report back out to the whole committee.
Okay.
And if only two come, that's okay. It's really, we only have one there. You can't really do any business if you only have one there.
Okay. Governance Subcommittee for 2015-2016, Laureen Polignoni, Suzanne McDonald with an alternate of Michael Hinchliffe. Negotiations will be Laureen Polignoni, Pam Lundquist with an alternate of Suzanne McDonald. Public Relations will be Pam Lundquist, Michael Hinchliffe with Barbie Lenares as the alternate. Safety will be myself, Barbie Lenares, with an alternate, okay, we don't need an alternate for that, and the Technology, Pam Lundquist.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, hold on.
We got more.
School building.
I didn't know if we were going to do those separately.
Okay. School building will remain Pam Lundquist. And the Legislative Liaison, Carol Jacobs. Crest Representative, Pam Lundquist. And the CPAC Liaison, Pam Lundquist.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Is everyone good with where you were placed?
Yeah. I think, you know, we tried to explain it in the orange notes. We were trying to balance people who had been on the committee with somebody new, so that obviously we can keep the train going, you know, so that...
Can I just make one more comment?
Yes, of course.
For the Governance Committee?
Yes.
We were working really hard on concussion policy.
Yes.
So there is a meeting coming up this Thursday. I would just ask that you continue working on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Great. Your input would be great.
Yeah. Laura's done a lot of work on that policy.
I could still go to that, right?
Yes, of course. They're public, they're open meetings.
That's right. Okay. I'll go.
It's going to be posted, so you could go.
Okay. Okay, so do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. So we're going to move along to the appointment of the Title II Compliance Coordinator. Chair will entertain a motion to appoint Donna Straight as the Title II Compliance Coordinator for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
The chair will entertain a motion to appoint Joan Laporta as the Title V Compliance Officer for the...
Have you got a vote on it?
Oh. Can we just keep on going with these?
Oh.
Can we do that?
You probably need...
Just with the subcommittees?
Well, they're not the subcommittees, they're individual liaisons, so...
Okay.
Probably better do these individually.
Okay. Do we have a...
So moved. Yes, we have a so moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The chair will entertain a motion to appoint Joan Laporta as Title V Compliance Officer for the 2015-2016 school year, as presented.
So moved.
So six, yeah. Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to appoint Pete Alusha and Joan Laporta as the Sexual Harassment Hearing Officers for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Does that do the Title IX coordinator?
I'll do that. I should do that, I should come back.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The chair will entertain a motion to appoint Joan Laporta as Title IX Officer for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to appoint the Director of Guidance, the Five-O-Four Coordinator for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Donna Straight as the Homeless Student Liaison for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to appoint Dr. William Medwood as the school physician for the 2015 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The chair will entertain a motion to appoint Laura MacCarion as the School Committee's Secretary for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The appointment of the Warrant Signature Designee. We need someone that can come in, is it weekly? Biweekly? Thursdays?
Biweekly.
Okay. To go in. And you currently do that? Or was it Alana?
It was Alana.
Okay. So is there anyone that would be able to do that? That would be able to come in during the day and that works out for you? Okay, good.
Okay, so Michael.
So the chair will entertain...
It has to be an alternate.
Okay.
Be an alternate.
You'll be an alternate? Okay. Chair will entertain...
When you say during the day... Yeah. That's going to be tricky for you, Suzanne, because what, if they have a payroll warrant that's not, like, if something comes up and we need to put something through, then Julie needs somebody to come in and sign it so she can process it with the town.
I can do that.
It would be tough for you during the day if you're working full-time, I think.
Right. I mean, I could get there at three.
If you could get there at three? Would that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want to try it, go for it.
Okay. So let Suzanne be the alternate.
It could be the alternate alternate.
No, no, you could be the alternate. Might as well get your feet wet.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to designate Michael Hinchliffe as the Payroll Warrant Signature Designee for the 2015-2016 school year with Suzanne McDonald as the alternate.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Okay. Moving along to the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes of April 28, 2015, along with acceptance of warrants 44P-15, 46P-15, 43V-15, and 45V-15, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We're going to turn it over now to Vanessa to tell us how school's going.
So last Friday, we had our prom, which had an awesome turnout, as you've heard. We also have the chorus, chorale, and a cappella concert tomorrow at seven. So for anyone that loves to hear Disney music or has little kids, I recommend going to that concert. It'll be good.
It'll be great.
We also have, people are wearing jeans on Friday to support the troops and veterans, and it'll be like a five-dollar donation, and that's during school. And also, we have the Memorial Day Parade coming up, where the band students will be marching as part of their requirement for their class. And all the sports are doing pretty well. Softball has two more games until they have their possible tournament, making it tournament, that is. And I know the girls lacrosse are having their senior game this week as well. So it's, actually, a lot of the teams are doing pretty well and have picked up a win just recently. And also, we have the seniors counting down the days. Where I think we're at nine, almost eight, so it's awesome.
I think the underclassmen are counting the days down, too, to tell you the truth.
Oh, on the student council board, I like to put up a...
I mean, for the seniors to go.
Yeah. I think that's true. But it's pretty exciting. Not going to lie, I'm counting down as well.
Just you wait, in a few years, you'll be like, I won high school again.
Oh, I know.
I'll see.
Maybe not.
We also have elections coming up for the new student council representatives and class officers as well, so we're getting that all set up for the next year to come.
Wow. Well, you've done a great job this year.
Yeah.
I just want to tell you, because your, the input that you give us every other week when you come here is really appreciated. You know, you always have been forthcoming with the way, you know, you feel as a student, and I definitely, you know, appreciate that, because it's not easy getting up here to all of us and then, you know, the outside people, and you've done a great job.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
So can we give Vanessa a little, we have a little sack here, Vanessa?
One for you, so we just want to present this to you, because we have really enjoyed having you here, and as Barbie said, you've provided some great input. And we really, you know, you're going to have great, you're going to do great things in this world. I have no doubt about that.
Absolutely. Stanie Aslam's is very lucky.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about something on the agenda? Mr. Murphy? Sure.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to address everyone here and in the community. For those of you who I haven't met, and for those watching on television, I'm Mike Murphy. I've been an employee of the Town of Georgetown for the last 14 years as a member of the English Department. Tonight, I'm here representing the GEA, which is Georgetown's teachers' union, as the vice president, and I am here to extend, excuse me, extend a message on behalf of our membership. After meeting with a majority of our teachers and staff to make them aware of our ongoing negotiations process, we have decided to partake in acts of solidarity until we can reach an amicable agreement. That means a majority of educators in our district will engage collectively for the purpose of letting you know how we feel about the current contract negotiation. On the heels of Teacher Appreciation Week, I'd like to let all my colleagues here know how much I appreciate their support for being here this evening, and I chose to show my appreciation through my actions, and I hope the school committee will do the same. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nothing you did.
They are wonderful teachers.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Dispensa to come on up.
You can come up with him, too.
First time I emptied an audience.
For support. He come up for support.
Probably not. My name is Lou Dispensa. I'm chairman of the Georgetown Theater Workshop. I'm here to look into the possibility of using the gym at the Pearlie School, the stage at the Pearlie School. I'm giving you a brief history. I won't talk too long.
Okay.
Just give you a little history. Georgetown Theater Workshop was founded in 1974. We're a nonprofit organization registered with the state. We were located for 39 years at the Pentucket Workshop, which is 29 Pleasant Street, so you're aware of that. So for the last two years, we've been at Spahawk School. But Spahawk has decided they want to use their stage for their own purposes, because they were renting it out to everybody, and we were included. So they wanted, they just want to use it for themselves. Okay, let's see here. First-time actors, our goal has been always to put people on stage. We've had many first-time actors come on stage, some stayed, some left, some went on to greater fortunes. We have, over the years, we have provided at least $12,000 in scholarships to the Georgetown school system, and $7,000 to other charities. So the students of Georgetown have done well by us so far. $7,000 to other charities. We have put on productions in veterans' hospitals, VFWs, church fundraisers, and, you know, we've worked all over the place. We do three plays a year, November, February, May. We have followed the same schedule for the past 40 years. We've been responsible for the buildings that we have been in. We've taken care of them, made sure they were cleaned. Spahawk, the same way. We made sure everything was back where, nobody had to worry about anything making a mess. We always cleaned up after ourselves. And as you know, or you know, because you've seen our shows...
I have.
We see people at tables. We have a cabaret style. So we own our own tables, our own chairs, our own lights, and everything, and our own sets. So we would hoping to, we can come back to Georgetown, because this is where we started. So what I'm going to do here is leave you a schedule.
Okay.
Could you pass that on?
Sure.
And leave you a couple of them.
Thank you.
Of the proposal for using...
You got enough there?
Yeah, I don't know.
Which is more important? We'll just take one further.
No, that's good.
Sure.
You can share one.
Do we have enough? There you go. We'll share.
So you can take a look at that.
Perfect.
And this is how we work it. And this is how we set up the dates, so you'll know in advance where we are, what we're doing, and it goes right through May. We do not work in the summertime.
Good for you.
Check it out.
No, you don't.
We'd appreciate coming back to Georgetown, because we have a lot of people that come from Georgetown.
Yeah.
And a lot of people that couldn't make it up the stairs when we were at the...
It was pretty steep.
The range.
You're right. This is handicap accessible.
This is handicap accessible.
Yeah.
So hopefully, get back to me sometime and let me know if it's feasible. We'd really appreciate it.
Yeah. I was happy to get your voicemail that you had left me explaining this, and I think it's a great idea to bring it back to Georgetown, because as you had told me, a lot of the people are from Georgetown.
Yes.
You know, and it is a great, Pearlie has such a great location, you know, there's plenty of parking, the, you know, it's such a quaint place. So when, when everyone's moved out of Pearlie, so will there be like a master calendar that, like, Mike's going to be responsible for?
Yeah, we have that now. We have a facilities calendar.
Okay.
And actually, I mean, right now, it'd be difficult, because we have so many, so much phys ed thing, you know, the phys ed teacher has on the stage, but when she moves to Pembroke, you know, that stage, you know, should pretty much be available to be used again as a stage.
This might be a great opportunity for seniors, too, who want to get involved in drama productions. That could be a lot of fun.
Yeah, I was definitely, you know, in support of this.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I think it, you know, we have the, Pembroke has also a beautiful stage, but, you know, there's going to be a lot of activity there, and I envision that that stage would be used a lot by the students and the faculty there. But at Pearlie, you know, we have, as you know, we have the senior center, we have the central office people, and then we have the preschool, which is just during the day, so...
Would you have to leave a lot of things there, Lou?
Well, it depends. If you have a little storage space, we could use it, but if you don't, I mean, tables and chairs, they're folding.
But you have, where do you store them now? Do you have a place?
Yeah, we have them stored, everything in storage right now.
In storage, okay.
So if we could leave them there, fine. If we couldn't, we'd have to work something out.
Yeah, we'd have to, we have to look at what you have and...
See what, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
And we'd have to look. I haven't been there since my grandson graduated from kindergarten.
Yeah, you'd have to come over. So how about if we, how about if we look at the dates and we talk with Mike and we take a little walk around, what have you, Chris?
Chris, because we also have wrestling in there at night, so that's what I was, that's what I was mouthing to Chris back there. We have, so we'll have to just look at our, we'll meet and look at the schedule and see what we already have booked for the gym.
Yeah, this is great to have the schedule, but we didn't have the schedule before.
Yeah, I mean, if you have anything booked for those times.
I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are some, yeah.
I mean, we're flexible. I mean, the only things we probably couldn't be flexible about is the play dates.
Performance, yeah.
But the other dates, we usually rehearse on a Sunday night, always, and then one night in the middle of the week, and then the last week, every night. So that's usually the schedule.
Okay. So let us take a look at it, maybe we can have you, you can contact Laura and then come over.
Yes, anytime.
Come over, and we can take a look at the space, so you can see, and then we'll have a better, we can walk it with you and we'll have a better sense.
Okay, that'll be great.
We want to involve Margaret and...
So we'll get in contact with you and...
Yeah. Yeah, and I have your contact information, too, that I can give to Laura. I think conceptually, we really love the idea, it's just really a matter of, just, you know, the logistics of all of it.
We might want to share the information, too, with Colleen of the Council of Aging. I mean, part of these is going to be after they're already, they're in the space, and I think it'd be a very positive thing for them, but...
Does the space get used much?
Well, it, it's...
Not, I mean, after...
I mean, right now, it's used really for storage for the phys ed teacher, but when we opened the new school, that, many, much of that equipment is going to go with the teacher.
Teachers, okay.
So we'd have to, we'd have to take a look at it, but I think we should look at the space together and, you know, see how much space it actually is, and, you know, I wouldn't imagine, Margaret, that the preschool would use it all that much as a stage.
Right. I wouldn't be, I only thought it, I'm not sure where PT is going to store their things, but again, you can...
There'll be space for them, yeah. I, we can figure that out.
Storage.
I wouldn't necessarily plan to, I wouldn't use the stage necessarily for that.
Yeah, so... So, Mr. Dispensa, let me just ask you, how many people are in attendance?
Well, the last play we did, for what, five nights? We did, how much, 227?
Like 227.
The play I went to was the funniest play I ever saw in my life, and that was about 300 people.
Yeah, that was for the whole, five performances.
The tables were packed, like, you could barely get out.
35 people for the five performances.
That was, I'm telling you, it was called, what was it called?
Then we have the bleachers, so we could...
It was called The Stenshuist Senator, and Glenn was the key. He was the main character. It was, I belly laughed the whole time. It was just, I've never even heard of the play, but it was the funniest thing. The acting was awesome. I had no idea they had a theater company in Georgetown until I went to that, and I've gone to a few things since, because I really enjoyed it that much. So I think it would definitely be something that would be great to have back in Georgetown if we can figure it out.
Yeah, I do, too.
Well, that play you saw, this guy writes from Florida.
Oh, really?
And he sends us the same things all the time. They're about the same, in one and out the other.
I mean, it was like, I mean, it was like the plays on, it just was hysterical. It was hysterical.
So I'd appreciate, well, we'll get, can you get, to let us know when we can tour the building?
As soon as, when I go home this evening, I will forward your contact information to Laura, just so she has it.
That's good.
And then you can set up a time that you can come down and view the, the location, and then figure it all out from there.
All right, good. Very good.
I'd love to go and see a show.
Do that one again, I think people would come. That was the funniest thing.
Bring culture to Georgetown. That's a wonderful thing. Bring it back to Georgetown.
Well, by the way, we've also presented three original plays. We did one that one of our guys wrote. In fact, that's the last one we did in Spahawk.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, he wrote two, and I wrote one, so we've done three original things, so it's been fun.
Community theater is great, and it's amazing how talented people are. And, like I said, I had met Glenn once, because we were talking about a business, a building inspector job, I think, and when my friend Daryl said, oh, it's, you know, neighbor Glenn, I'm like, Glenn? Like, in a comedy? I just couldn't see it, and he was amazing.
I know, he's pretty funny.
He was amazing, I gotta tell you.
He's acting over there.
Oh, he was so funny.
He's acting.
It was so good, I have to tell you. They do it again, we all got to go. It was really funny.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for, when the meeting was canceled last time, you know, I agree with your patience with that, yeah.
I was looking forward to it, and I'm going, all right.
Well, you had a big audience here tonight for you.
Yeah, they will. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. It's so fun. It's nice, I look forward to that. It'd be nice if we could do it.
I have a great savings, too.
Yeah.
Okay. We have the food services update.
Yeah. Come on up, Heather. Now, where are you, Heather?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Good.
I'm here to represent the Health and Wellness Committee.
Yes, I knew that, yep.
Meredith is not able to be here for other reasons.
Okay, well, that's fine. Which would you like to hear first?
You'll represent, no worries.
Yes.
Who are you pick? What do you want to talk about first, Heather?
Well, the report that we have for the Health and Wellness Committee is pretty short, so I'll start with that one.
Okay, go ahead.
So as you are aware, we, the Guidance Department implemented the Attitudes and Behavior Survey in the fall, and the results have been gathered, and as a result of those surveys, a subcommittee has, was formed, it's called the Student Assets and At-Risk Committee, in order to address some of the areas of concern around the survey results and also explore ways to develop more assets for Georgetown students, which is very exciting. On April 4, we had our second Health and Wellness Fair, which was fantastic. It was better than last year, in my opinion, and we had a lot of participants there who represented a number of health and wellness fields. We had a chiropractor there doing posture screenings. I participated and was a little bit shocked and horrified at my posture results. There were dermatology screenings, martial arts demonstrations, the WIC, the Women, Infants, and Children Program was there, we had a pediatric dentist represented, and a number of other participants that really rounded out.
Fire department, with cute little pink hats.
Oh, yes.
Little hats.
Those were very, very popular.
The kids had a good time.
Yes, it was really cute. Yeah, so it was, we had over 200 visitors to the fair, so it was a really, really successful event, and...
260?
I think it's, I think it's a really good idea that you have it on the same day as the pancake breakfast.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I think that helps you with the walkthrough...
Yes, it was really cute. Yeah, so it was, we had over two hundred visitors to the fair, so it was a really, really successful event and.
Two hundred and sixty?
I think it's, I think it's a really good idea that you have it on the same day as the pancake breakfast.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I think that helps you with the walkthrough traffic, and I heard a lot of people at the breakfast talking about having gone through and how much they liked it, so. You know, it's good to do both at the same time, I think.
And imagine in the new school next year.
Excited, yeah. I'm looking forward to seeing how that will all unfold, because I'll talk about my food service one. And our most current, we just had our final meeting for the year, but our most current project is to review the policy for the Health and Wellness Committee and see if any, not major changes, but just to make sure that the language is still consistent with our goals and just evaluate whether we have already met some of those goals or whether we need to tweak the language a little bit. So we had our first review of it and we made some notes, but we haven't gotten too far in that so far. And that's pretty much it for the Health and Wellness Committee. Does anybody have any questions about that or?
No, but I think you've done a great job with it, and I appreciate it because that was something that I was so active in, you know, years ago. And it just, with the time that you guys have picked, it just doesn't work for me to attend, but I love getting the emails and the, the fair, I think, is a great idea. And I agree with the superintendent, just having it piggyback with the pancake breakfast seems to be ideal.
Yeah.
But you've done a great job with that.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that takes a lot of, a lot of time outside of your normal school day to go ahead and do that, so we appreciate your time with that.
Thank you. I think Mary Beth and I are both really passionate, as well as the other nurses.
Yeah.
So they've all contributed a lot, so I'll make sure to.
Yeah, they were all there. They were all there, which is on Saturday.
Yeah, that's great.
That was great. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I concur totally. You've done a fantastic job this year. But I was just wondering if you talked about any goals for the next year, or maybe that was going to be something for the first meeting, maybe next December or November?
It was on our agenda. Like our focus areas or?
Well, I was thinking usually the first meeting of the year is like in November or December, right? And, yeah, just for goals to work on, you know, for the year ahead. And I just had in my mind, and it's something that the committee can discuss and talk about, but just to kind of ramp up the communications about our anti-bullying efforts and, you know, prevention, bullying prevention efforts. And I mean, I know that we do a lot, but I'm not quite sure if people and, you know, families in the community really know everything that's done and how consistent it is and comprehensive from K through twelve, and so I just thought.
I think that would be a great use of our time.
The committee might want to look at how we can better communicate that and, you know, just keep it current too.
Definitely, and we had intended to, no, absolutely, and I will definitely.
It's within the realm of the traditional areas of focus for the Health and Wellness Committee.
It definitely falls under that scope, so.
Yeah.
We had intended to go through some ideas, like do some brainstorming for what we wanted to work on in the upcoming school year, but we got so, we always get.
Well, we will need you to, because the next round of the strategic plan we have to do next year. So, you know, you may need to have sort of an earlier than November meeting with the group so that you can talk about what you would like to propose as goals in that focus area for inclusion and the plan we'll probably develop and start putting out in October.
Do we know when our first report to the school committee is for the Health and Wellness? Because we can schedule our first Health and Wellness meeting to give us enough time to have a proposal for our goals.
We don't know that, but we could certainly work with you on that.
Okay.
You know, we would give you plenty of time. But, you know, I know that that's one of the continuing focus areas. I don't see that changing in the next plan. We're just, the steps, the action steps would change based on what you were going to be working on that year.
Pam will help me with that.
So, yeah, so that would be great. We could, we can roll that in together.
Right. Fantastic. Anything else, Health and Wellness? So I'm trying to keep it short because I know you guys are very busy. So I sent you my, my list of things that have been going on with the Food Services Department, and I tried to just keep it to the highlights. Ultimately, we're all very excited about the new school. We recently had, just to make sure that wasn't mine, a large equipment training at the new school where two of the kitchen managers and I were able to go through and have thorough training of the care and use of some of the new equipment that hasn't, you know, been seen in Pearlie and Pembroke, which was really, really exciting. I think the staff was really looking forward to that training, and it really got a lot of their creative juices flowing and they're thinking about how it's going to work for next year. So moving forward from that, we're still working on some of the planning stages of what the staffing is going to be like or is going to look like for that coming school year, because it's very different than the school that we, the schools that we have currently. So we're still trying to parse out who's doing what, and, but we are still very exciting, excited about it. As far as participation goes, it's always a topic of concern. We are watching it carefully. And at the middle high school, it is down for meal sales at lunch for paid eligible students, which is a mouthful. We have seen actual, some increases in students who are eligible for free meals accessing lunches, which is exciting. And also reduced price meals as well. At Pembroke and Pearlie though, we've seen increases in meal sales at lunchtime, which is really, I think it's very encouraging. And I think that that is partially attributable to some of the special meal days that we have. We've started doing a couple Lucky Tray Days. We recently had a Fenway Opening Day at Pembroke, which was very successful because it dovetailed with some events that Margaret had planned throughout that week, so that was very encouraging. But I think that moving forward, we want to focus on continuing some of those special days and really, I want to work more with the managers to see what ideas they have, because they know their students the best. They see them every day. They talk to them to see how we can generate more interest in the school meals program. And at the middle high school, I've been working with some school departments to try and generate more student interest as far as just programming around the school meals program. For example, I don't know if you saw this, I'm so excited about it. The Child Nutrition Outreach Program has an annual school breakfast promotion video contest. And I sent out so many emails trying to see if anybody would be interested in doing it, and we did have two takers. Mrs. Donovan and Mrs. Marquetti's class submitted videos, and they're on the school website. I don't know if I sent you links to them, but I would be happy to if you're interested. They're hilarious. They're really, they're fantastic. Unfortunately, they didn't win. They had the opportunity to win a thousand dollars and go on TV. But I'll just make sure to nag the high schoolers to do it again next year, and next year maybe that will be the year. We, I'm also working with the Art Department on developing a logo for the Food Services Department and.
Excellent.
Yes.
Yes.
I was very excited about that program. So I'm working with Martha Dodge and Nora Cannon. We're doing a logo contest. So we have a form where students can choose from a select set of slogans that I just came up with from looking at other districts.
Very creative.
And it, and they had the opportunity to create their own slogan as well. And they submit their idea for what a good logo for the Food Services Department would be. And we're still collecting some entries, and I haven't looked at them yet. I'm actually hoping to meet with Martha tomorrow to go over the entries. And hopefully, the result is a very beautiful logo for the department.
Great.
Yeah, so that's the exciting stuff that we're doing. I don't know if I'm forgetting anything.
We're in the black.
We're in the black.
That was my question.
Right, we're in the black.
Okay, so how far in the black?
Um, about six thousand dollars, I think. I looked today right before I came out. And we had just had a payroll warrant and a vendor warrant, and I think you paid all your bills.
Yeah, we cleared out most of them, yeah.
Right, so that's awesome, because we were running behind most of the year, struggling with it, so. And you still have two more state reimbursements.
Yes, we're expecting.
And you're not going to be purchasing a lot more food, so we should end hoping, maybe fifteen thousand dollars would be nice to start the year with.
That's great.
Great.
Yeah.
How, how have collections gone?
It's an ongoing process. I was hoping that the charging policy would help a little bit more than it is with keeping some of those outstanding meal balances from accruing, but we still have a pretty hefty set of outstanding balances at all three schools. It's worse at the middle high school than Pearlie and Pembroke, but tomorrow I've actually earmarked a solid set of time to make phone calls. Tracy and I periodically send out emails to the parents to remind them, but it's not coming in as fast as we'd like.
Maybe with new, with new software at some point, that might help when parents are really more aware of what their balance. I mean, I know you're calling and I know that you're doing the best you can with what you have. I'm just hoping, you know, ever hopeful that new technology will help in that effort.
I agree, and I'm hoping that that will be the case, they, where they can see the balance in real time and what their students are purchasing, then it would be easier for them to maintain that.
We'll shut them off.
How has, have they had to have alternative lunches? I mean, have you had to be enacting that?
No, the only, the only times we have to enforce the policy in a negative way is if a student comes through with a second meal and they don't have money. Anytime a student comes through for breakfast or lunch, if it's their first meal, we'll feed them. We don't want them going hungry for classes. But if they come through with a second meal or extra items of some kind, we ask them to leave it with a cashier. We don't throw it out in front of them or make them take it back. We just ask them to leave it there and explain that they have a balance on their account.
Okay.
Still not very fun, but.
No, not at all. I'm sure it's uncomfortable.
So hasn't the middle high school always been the better of the schools with the, with the amount of people that are purchasing?
Historically, I believe that was the case, but one of the things that I think impacted the participation at the middle high school was when I came in, I was pretty gung ho about adhering to the strict federal guidelines that we're required to implement. And I think that that was a surprise to a lot of students, and it wasn't received well by many of them.
Nationwide, probably.
Nationwide, yes. It's definitely not just limited to Georgetown. One of the things I'm hoping to do in the coming years is, or not even the coming years, in the next year is to revamp the look of the cafeteria and take, adopt an approach that some districts are doing that's a little bit different than what we are right now, and that's focusing on concepts. And so right now we have three lines, but they're not really identified as like, as three lines. We've got both sides serve the hot meal. One of them serves alternates as well, and we also have the deli bar in the middle and the salad bar. I'm thinking about switching it, and I have, I don't even think I've talked to you about this yet, Jo.
That's okay.
I'm hoping that by having one side be marketed as hearty homestyle or something like that. I haven't fleshed out all the details, and then have one side be something different and just really create lines that are specific to certain flavor profiles that it might generate some more interest with the students as far as creating more choices for them.
But do you know what the problem is, Heather? I mean, it, you know, I know you're going to try to fix it, but like, is it, is it that it's not enough food? Is it that they don't like the choices? Is it, do you know what the problem is, why the participation is down?
I, I believe it was we were not following the guidelines appropriately before Heather came.
Yeah, but so what is the issue? Is the issue that the kids don't, don't like the taste? They don't like the variety? They, it's not enough. I think that we're, I'm always encouraged.
Too healthy.
Well.
I'm sorry, I'm a mom.
I don't know what that means, you know, like.
So I can tell you.
Healthy things can taste good, you know, and can look good. I don't know what the issue is, so.
It can.
That's why I'm, I'm encouraged, I guess I would encourage you to try to figure out what the problem is.
Yeah, weren't we supposed to do like the, the focus group with the kids like last year? We talked about getting a group of kids together and getting their feedback and.
And doing surveys.
Right.
Well, or, or just having an advisory group of people who can constantly be talking to you about what they're, what they're hearing or what they're noticing or.
I'm sure it's like a, definitely a mix of things. If, I know on your Health and Wellness Committee, along with the food, if you maybe had like a student representative and had a position open like that for you to, them to talk to you. And have, like, so then other students could come to them and say like how they're feeling. Because if you come to like a group of students, people are just going to like, ah, like I don't like this, I don't like this, because we're complainers, we're high schoolers, middle schoolers. I've learned that the hard way.
Kind of fits the profile, right?
And I did meet with the student council.
Yeah.
And at, in the middle and high school level and with a few classes to discuss some of their feedback. So I have been meeting with students. I haven't established necessarily a concrete focus group.
That's okay, as long as you're talking to the kids, I think that's.
And we have had student representatives at the Health and Wellness Committee, you know, when it's possible.
Do you have a sense of what, I mean, what is it that you?
I hear like a bunch of different things. Like I know some people think that if they don't get fed enoughs or like, and stuff like that. But I'd have noticed that a bunch of my friends are bringing bagged lunches a lot more, but I think they have such an outstanding balance, they're too scared to like go up anymore.
Well, that could be a problem.
Can I just ask, can you serve something other than whole wheat pasta? What kind of pasta do we serve?
We can. If that's something that the school committee would prefer that I can, I pursue, there are applications for waivers to use white pasta as opposed to.
High fiber white pasta.
I would have to investigate what's available through our vendor.
I know it's a federal guideline, the whole wheat pasta, and I know kids love pasta, but they don't love whole wheat pasta.
Is that the same for the pizza as well, the whole wheat pizza?
The waiver? Is that, is, are you asking if there's a waiver for that?
No, I know you're serving whole wheat pizza.
Yes.
And so I think that some of the kids aren't enjoying that as much as just regular pizza on Fridays. I know that used to be such a big, you know, sale item.
I think the waiver application though is you had to document that you had a substantial drop in participation to even get recognized, to have them hear the waiver.
There were three ways to ask for a waiver to use white pasta. One of them was to demonstrate a significant decrease in participation just for pasta, not overall. So we would have to look back at our production records from when we were using white pasta to when we were using. So either that, which is, which is something that can, I could do, or we could demonstrate that we can't find an acceptable product for students. I'd have to talk with my state contact person to see what sort of documentation they would need to consider that application valid. And then the third one is if, oh my gosh, what's the third one? There's, oh, yeah, there's quality and then there's student acceptability, so I think that if I got enough.
Isn't there like white combo pasta that, you know, has more fiber, but it is a combination of wheat and white so that the kids can't really tell the difference?
It looks white. It tastes white. That's what I'm talking about, that I think they would like better.
Like the Wonder Bread that's wheat, but it looks like white.
Yeah.
We.
Fool them.
There are definitely a lot of products out there.
It's been out for years, but I don't think federally, I don't think it complies with federal.
Well, there are, there actually, I'm glad, actually kind of glad that you asked, because at the, I go to a monthly meeting with my buying collaborative, which is a bunch of school districts that combine our buying power to get better pricing on items. And periodically, we have vendors come and show us new products that they think will help better suit our students' taste preferences as well as meet the federal guidelines. And we had one vendor come who showed us a new brand of pasta that's whole wheat, but it's significantly more palatable, in my opinion, than the Barilla brand that we've been using.
Yeah.
And Barilla's a good brand, so when the Barilla whole wheat is not being accepted by students, you know that that's pretty bad.
But it's whole wheat.
I know, but it's still good.
I know.
So we actually have added that to our bid documents for the coming school year.
Oh, okay.
So.
You know, I think just, we just need to keep figuring out what the problem is, because sometimes you can try to solve a problem. If you don't really know exactly what the problem is, then the solutions may not do anything, you know, close to what you want.
And I did send survey questions to, actually to the leadership.
Yes.
Some of the members of the leadership to see if it could be included and.
Yes, we did see that.
Yeah, I passed it along to.
Yeah, you did, thank you. Yeah, it backed you on that, because that was that information I forwarded to you, Pam, and Michael.
I saw, yeah.
Because, you know, Heather was, Heather's doing a survey, so she was wondering if we wanted to embed it in our survey or if it's just better for her to send it out separately as a food service survey, so we'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Yeah, it's just a concern, just because the kids couldn't wait to get to the middle high school because of the lunches. And, you know, to have it decrease, I mean, you didn't specifically say how much it has decreased, but I've just, you know, I've been hearing too that there's more and more kids bringing the bag lunches that used to buy every day. And then you have the kids that buy every day that don't necessarily eat it every day, and then the parents are spending the money. Or they're taking the lunch and it kills me to think that the fruits are being thrown away. You know, it's just such a waste. So for me, like for the person that works there to say, oh, you have to take this, and if the child is like, I don't really want it, no, you have to take it. And then to see that piece of fruit, you know, be thrown away, that's just so wasteful, you know?
Yes.
But.
If we, if we tell them that they don't have to take the fruits and vegetables, we will see even more of a dramatic, dramatic decrease in reimbursable meals.
Right, because it's.
Well, you won't get enough for the guidelines.
For reimbursability, you have to.
Right, but to just see it go like, to see them throw it away.
You have to suggest for reimbursability.
So what we're trying to do to combat that waste is offer a diverse set of fruits and vegetables. And what I. And what I.
But if we have a decrease in number, we're not gonna be able to sustain, it's not gonna.
It's gonna spiral.
Yeah.
But I like what you're saying about the diversity of fruits.
Yep, we provide them options of things that they might like, then they're more likely to take something that they do like than have to take something that we make them take. Um, and that's that's something that I definitely am seeing success in at the elementary level, so if we start them young and teach them to choose it on their own. Then when they get up to the high school level, they might not be as resentful as their current students are for having to take fruits and vegetables at the point of sale. Some of them are, some of them are, some of them are great. Come back and get extra salad and like two or three apples, and I'm like, please, just take all of those. So it's definitely a complex set of issues that we're working on.
Is it, are are there other schools in the collaborative seeing the same sort of, like, are we in line with the other the the other schools in the buying collaborative?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's definitely um a mixed bag, uh, some some school districts are seeing a lot of success. Like Wilmington, I know just historically their their students have just loved lunch. Um, but a lot of districts that um are in the collaborative are just struggling to get kids to take fruits and vegetables or they're having issues meeting their bottom line, um, we've seen increase in food costs, it's it's a lot of like very similar things that you've seen in the news. We're not exempt from that.
Yeah, I know you're under a lot of pressure and and I do think that just coming in and making all the, you know, the initiatives and following through with it, which I appreciate you doing that, because obviously we need to follow the guidelines, but it it is um.
It's a balance.
Yeah.
You're doing good, I love my lunch.
Thank you. That's good.
I have two happy campers.
Two out of three is not bad.
Two out of three is not bad. Not happening.
Yeah, he's hopeless anyway.
He's hopeless anyway.
And as always, I'm open to suggestions.
Yes.
I I wanna work, make the program work.
Yes, of course you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So if you don't mind, I I could put my things after Peter and Chris, since there are people here that.
Yeah, that's fine, but I do just want to apologize that I didn't welcome our new school committee member. That was my fault, it was a little rushed in the beginning and then uh I got discombobulated. When any little thing is out of whack for me, I'm done. Like, I'm like a soldier that just, you know, so Suzanne, thank you for taking on um the school committee for the two-year term. We appreciate it and I know you're gonna do a great job.
I'm rethinking it.
To stay for a couple meetings before you really know.
But we appreciate you taking the time.
Yes, welcome.
Very happy to have you. Okay, so sure, so we can either, we do Chris first and then we'll do Peter and his team, and then we'll do my stuff. Thank you, Chris, I don't know, is anybody coming with Chris? Okay, I guess you're alone there, Chris. All right, thank you, Peter.
He might need your support.
All right.
All right, so um a little bit of background and we're still, I think a little bit in flux on this. So we're talking about the athletic handbook and proposals for next year. And generally, um what happens is we start with a committee um of parents, student athletes and coaches. And then it goes to the school council and then it would go um to you guys. Um, there was sort, when it was sent to Carol, she sort of intercepted it and there was a little bit of philosophical discussion. And we decided that it really should be going to her, not to the school um council before it goes to school committee. So Car- so I worked with Carol after I met with the committee um to kinda work on the revisions and that sort of thing. So just so you kinda know the channels that it went through.
When we first developed the athletic handbook, we did it as a district committee. It was really not tied to the school council, the reason it kinda got tied to the school council is because it really affects the high school and middle school. Most, you know, Hemberg doesn't really talk about athletics, right? So that's how it sort of started to go in that direction. Um, but what I said is I wanted to talk again about whether or not it really is, it really does belong there as part of the school council's role or is it really something where we wanna just look at it as a district? And not necessarily tie it a hundred percent into the actual approval through the school council. So that's a discussion we can have, but as I reviewed it, Chris is right, I said, hmm, this seems, cause I've I've been here eight years, right? So I've seen the different iterations and uh, you know, we had put a lot of time into sort of establishing a philosophy of inclusion and trying to um, you know, believe that high school sports were for high school kids. Because what we saw was a lot of our teams, like Chris and I one year, I I think the the JV lacrosse was mostly seventh graders. And we began to talk about that and say, wait a minute, hold it, number number one, you've got thirteen year olds, four thirteen fourteen year olds playing against kids who are sophomores, juniors in high school, um bigger, stronger. Not only that, but a little more socially in a completely different place. And we just said philosophically, even if they can make the team and they've got talent, is it really where we want kids to play? Especially when we knew there were high school kids who either weren't going out for the teams or were getting cut and middle school kids were able to make the teams. So it caused us to sort of look at the whole scenario and we developed this handbook that basically and we also looked at a lot of other um school sports, you know, uh, school sports programs that had um handbooks. And we looked at it and we said, you know, we we really liked what Ipswich was doing, we felt felt that Ipswich had a so- a solid athletic program. And they they actually had a kind of a philosophy that was, you know, before you start cutting, you know, you you should allow, you know, enough kids to be on the team or to at least have the opportunity to try out before you cut. And that we would allow middle school students to play on our high school teams, but only if we had slots available. So you you wouldn't see kids not going out for teams in ninth and tenth grade, cause they were anticipating the seventh and eighth grade kids were gonna make the team. And that is what we were seeing, so, you know, we just came up with a philosophy that we had in the handbook. So when I read the changes, I said to Chris, Chris, can can you help me? Cause it feels to me like this is a change in philosophy, like are we still embracing the same philosophy? That middle school, uh, middle school is developmental, you know, we we want as many kids to play as can play. Um, freshmen, we have freshman teams because we want the freshman kids to be able to play and there's a spot for eighth grade potentially if if all the fresh, if those spots aren't finished. And then when kids get into JV and varsity, varsity is very competitive, it's, you know, the best kids are gonna play, playing time is earned, you're not getting equal time. And to some extent, that happens on JV as well, cause JV's preparing for varsity. But even at the JV level, we believe if you're good enough to make the team, you should play, you should play. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it isn't the, there are some places that it's, you know, small rosters, the best kids play. And that's some people's philosophy, we haven't chosen to have that philosophy, cause we want more kids to have memories of playing sports. Because we believe sports offers you a lot of other things, it's not just about winning, losing and getting to play all the best kids all the time. It really is an opportunity to build leadership skills, to teamwork, you know, you, I don't have to give you that lecture, you you know.
And athletic skills.
And in athletic skills. So 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 we we just looked at it and we said, you know, when Chris and I talked about, I said, I think I'd like to, I think I'd like us to to look at that one more time, because we're gonna have a change with sixth grade not being part of the middle school program. So I don't know how that's gonna actually affect middle school numbers. And Chris told me the only place we have this conflict with the numbers we have now is in boys' basketball. We don't, we don't hit the, we don't hit the number for girls, um, but we do for, what'd you tell me?
Middle school and freshman.
Middle school and freshman.
This year, yeah.
This year. Um, so even if we say fifteen is the maximum, the min- what'd I say?
Kind of a minimum maximum.
Minimum, yeah, it's guy, I'm not sure what to call it, but the number you have to hit before you cut, it it's not always the case that you get to fifteen. You know, that.
We usually don't in most sports, we don't.
So so the question is, one of the things that we also have to worry about, unfortunately, we don't love to talk about it, but it is unfortunate, we have to we have to worry about the money. And if we have fewer kids, part of the reason why Chris has been able to get this athletic program into a place where we're not going in the wrong direction. I mean, we were supplement- supplementing sometimes as many, as much as fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year at the end of the year because we anticipated we were gonna get more money and then and we did, you know, we went from at one point six hundred athletes to five forty. And if you start doing the user fee money, you can see that, and you had transportation costs, game officials, everything went up. So we're finally got it, Chris has finally got it to the point where it's in the black. And so part of our worry in changing the minimums, maximums would be that it will, there'll be fewer kids that will be playing. And how will that affect the bottom line, cause we we're not skating through with a lot of extra money.
Right.
Right, so there was two things, it was the, it was the philosophy question and it was the financial question. So when Chris and I met, I, it looked like all the other recommendations made sense to me. I talked to Peter and Chris and they said they they agreed. And so what we said was, we would prefer not to change the, our recommendations, we prefer not to change the minimums and maximums this year for, because we don't know what the financial impact is going to be, and we also don't know the impact of what sixth grade numbers are going to involve. We may not have the same problem if more seventh and eighth graders can play middle school. And then there's enough spots in high, you know, there's enough kids in high school to fill those slots, so we don't have to cut. We just don't know, so that was, that's why we made the recommendation that that we made and thought we'd come forward with the committee with that. Yes, Suzanne?
I was on the handbook committee.
Yeah.
And so um some of the things that we, you know, had talked about was when you do have excess amount of players. Um, they're not getting enough playtime to actually make a diff- difference developmentally for them. And so we were also throwing around possibly having players and also practice players and the practice players would pay, just not as much as the players that make the team. And that way, that could make up for some of the budget. They will get the benefit of the skills and learning the game, so that the following year, you know, they'll make it and not be cut. And also, um.
So they would be practicing just to practice, not to practice.
Yeah, but I. Just like you would have like an AAU, you know, you have the players and you have practice players and the practice players are are benefiting by getting the skill and the scrimmaging and just not, but they wouldn't pay as much as the player.
Do you think we would have athletes that would do that?
I think so, because I mean.
Small school, I don't know.
I don't know, because, you know, we, with the players, you know, with so many players, kids weren't getting enough playtime. And parents were getting upset because they were paying so much and they weren't just getting the, and they're not, they're not gaining anything. The players aren't getting uh developmentally better because they're not playing more time.
Hmm, I had, I, a few years ago, I remember one dad saying to me, this was before, I think my kids were even in middle school or maybe they were in middle school, and one dad said to me, you know, my daughter's not getting much playing time. But he said, my money's going, it's well worth it because of the five days a week after school, that first of all is keeping her busy. It's.
Part of a team.
Yeah, so I do think, I have heard parents complain about no- not enough playing time, but then I've I've heard other parents saying the opposite. That, you know, the practice is just as beneficial.
Or they'd rather have their children be on a team. It, I think what Suzanne is suggesting, I I think as Chris has done in college, but I think you have to be careful at the message you send. Like, I'm good enough to be on the team and I'm good enough to practice, but I'm not good enough to play. I I don't know, I have my questions about that, that's right, that's that's my concern. And and just as we have parents who are upset about the playing time, we also have parents who are glad their kids are on a team. And they're happy that their kid didn't get cut, cause they do feel like they're getting something. So athletics is one of those things, you're never, we're never gonna please everybody, it's just, it's not possible.
But it is a hot topic.
It is a hot topic.
Because they're paying, you know, a good amount of money for. Um, but I have resigned to the fact that no one's, you know, you can't please everybody. Um.
Unfortunately.
Right, and, you know, you just wanna maintain these programs. Because I think we're doing a great job, you know, the the student athletes are doing a great job.
And we do well.
You know, I'm very impressed with uh, you know, the behaviors that I've seen when they, you know, travel to other schools. Um, you know, I can say that the Georgetown kids, for the most part, are well, you know, better behaved than what I've seen when I've gone to other towns to watch a um, a sport. But I do attribute that to your attendance, because I know that you that you, you know, pride yourself on going to pretty much all of the games. So I do think that that plays a big role, um, and the superintendent, the principals, they've, at home games, I'm always seeing that. Um, but, you know, I'm torn, I'm I'm torn with this.
It's tough, I mean, there's no, there's no right answer to it, there really isn't. It's it's all about, we have to decide as a, as a district, what is our philosophy? Are we, you know, I think our philosophy right now is inclusion, but while remaining competitive.
Right.
And it's a fine balance, it really is.
Well, and also developing athletic abilities that are our students.
Lifelong.
I mean, to me, fifteen makes sense in basketball, because you've got three lines. And, you know, eighteen makes sense in baseball, cause you've got nine players on a field.
And we've been, I've I've really been pushing towards adding sports that do build those lifelong. In my tenure, we've added golf, we're adding volleyball this year, we've added skiing, those are sports that you can do for the rest of your life.
Those are, that's fantastic, I'm so happy about that, you're absolutely right, yeah.
Swimming, we've added swimming.
Swimming, it's fan, yeah.
So you know, whatever decisions we make don't have to be forever, I think that's what we're saying, we're saying, we're saying, maybe we don't change it this year because we have a few things in flux.
I'd rather not.
Right, and then, you know, it's something you really revisit, maybe basketball is the one sport where you have to look at it differently, because it's a different sport. Um, but, you know, the the other recommendations I think that are on here um either represent current practice and it's just putting it in language in the thing, or it it just makes sense, you know? And so I didn't, I personally didn't have any issues with any of that and Chris made a few changes in terms of wording or something. But it wasn't substantive in terms of like major sweeping changes. But that, you know, my advice is just, you know, I think we hang with the the minimums until we have more information as to what those things that are in flux are and we keep talking to parents and, you know, but but I think we we, when we have these advisory committees, we do have to make sure we represent all sides of the issue, right? Cause I know how it is, people, I get, I'd get on a committee if I had an interest of, you know, and I I a peer group or something that wanted me to go in a certain way or I philosophically believed it, but, you know, you, you know, we also have to realize that we have a lot of different people that represent different points of view on it. And like I said, it it it, I don't, I don't think you want it to, I don't think you want your philosophy to go like this, depending on who gets on your committees. You know, we ha- we have to sort of commit to a philosophy and then if we have to tweak it, then we tweak it. But but that felt to me like it was different than the direction that, you know, all of the work had been going in for the last eight years. So I just, I just, it it was something that caused me to to contact them and said, I just, maybe I'm reading this wrong. And, you know, we we are all in, I, you know, we are all in agreement, it wouldn't hurt to hold off on it if we're all not a hundred percent sure.
Can I use Vanessa as an example?
Sure, I guess, if you're okay with Vanessa.
So as you guys may or may not know, Vanessa is a fantastic field hockey player, awesome. Um, and she's actually the team manager of our softball team. Um, so that's one thing that all of our coaches are always looking for, team managers, and especially in a sport like basketball, oftentimes they become practice players where, you know, they're not paying a user fee, but, you know, they're helping out, they're helping the girls, you throw them in. Uh, when I was in high school, uh, one of my friends, actually, he was the team manager for basketball sophomore year, junior year, senior year. On senior game, they gave him a uniform.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, and he he played in the game, you know, and that was huge for him, I mean, he wasn't a very good basketball player, but it was, he loved the game and he was around it. Um, and I believe he's coaching today, you know, so um, that's something else that a lot of our coaches like are team managers. And that's another way to get involved in athletics if maybe you don't make the cut. And again, we've cut very little, um, if at all, I don't think we cut a single kid this year.
I just wanted something to do, so I was like, I'll be the manager.
She does an awesome job.
I love do, like, I honestly, I have never felt so included on a team, like, I literally hopped on the field and like, in the middle of the season, they're like, hey, what's up? And I'm like, helping them out, it was an awesome feeling.
Yeah.
But I like, that's where, when they're saying, um, the feeling of being on a team is a great feeling and being able to sit with them is an awesome feeling. Like, I'm also, on the field hockey team, it's a very small group of girls, but we may not all be at the same athletic stance. But for kids coming in to play with us, um, that are really trying out and that's maybe their first time, it's an awesome experience for them and just to be that part of it.
Why we have the philosophy we have.
Yes.
That is in in a nutshell, exactly what what we're trying to promote.
I think what's a challenge, I agree with everything I've heard, you're never gonna please everyone.
No.
But I I think there's a a couple of things, so I I think um we get criticized at times because you have really some super athletes in town.
We do, we've been very skilled people.
We do, and they feel like they're not getting the potential, because we accept everyone on a team. And that the team as a whole doesn't compete as well, I've I've heard that. At the same token, I think it's incredibly healthy to play sports in school, I mean, I think it just rounds out your whole experience. Now, having um a son that's played. Now, having, um, a son that's played club, I'm, I'm gonna say clubs, club soccer for years.
Mm-hmm, oh, right. Yep.
I have to say, I've seen practice players, there's usually only three or four, and I always felt like they were the outcasts. I never actually felt like they were part of the team, the practice players. Try and like hell.
Hmm.
Well, to get accepted.
Yeah, except. Mm-hmm.
But, to me, they were never really part of the team, in my opinion. And that was just my view of watching them at practice. Never attended a game. Like, they wanna be part of the game. That's just my own personal.
And I think sometimes practice players just wanna be practice players to gain the skill, you know?
Not saying anyone's right or wrong.
You might be looking at it from a different perspective.
Yeah.
But I've had a son who just was a practice player, because he wanted to gain the skill.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's different reasons why they're on it.
Mm-hmm. There, yeah, I'm sure there is. I'm sure, I'm sure there is.
It, it isn't, it isn't, there isn't an easy answer to it, there's no doubt. But, you know, I, I will point out that our teams do well.
So.
I mean, you know, we, we, we make it to the state tournament most of the time. We, we've gotten many sportsmanship awards, our coaches get coaches of the year. You know, uh, like I said, I think we, for most sports, the, the numbers are not even an issue. Basketball, boys' basketball and those couple of teams is definitely consistently an issue. But every other sport, the, the, we don't usually hit the, we don't usually hit the minimum, maximum, whatever it is we call it. So, maybe we just need to look at basketball at some point, but, you know.
For those kids that do wanna try extra hard and do, or may wanna just level up their skills a little better to try for the team next year, like, there are definitely club opportunities everywhere. Like, for field hockey, I've reached outside of Georgetown to join a club. And that like helps, it helps you and helps you improve for your team play as well.
Yeah.
And we do have a lot of options too. There's wrestling, um, there's track, uh, potentially.
Yeah, non-cut sports. Yeah, yeah. We've definitely, I, I've seen some basketball players, you know, go to the wrestling.
A wrestling coach actually started off as a basketball player and he, he's, I don't know, five foot six.
Our wrestling program has, has more than one wrestler at each weight class now. When I first came here six years ago, we forfeited probably all but six of the matches, cause we just didn't have enough kids to, to compete at a certain weight class. So, you know, that definitely is a sport that's, you know, taken off. But, uh, you know, I'm not sure where, where you wanna go with this at this point, Barbie and the group. I mean, do you, you know, Chris is coming forward with a recommendation on a number of those things. Um, but, you know, Peter and, and Chris and I, you know, as we've talked about it, you know, we, because we're not sure of the impact of those two things I talked about, you know, we would all be very comfortable saying, we'd, we'd approve everything on the list except those minimums. To stick for another, to stick, yeah, to stick, you know, with the.
Asterix, yeah.
Again, it's never forever, you know, there's always room for discussion, but for all the reasons we're talking, it's not like there's one way to look at this.
Right. So the ones that are asterisk, so what, so you would just keep them?
So, yeah, so the numbers that are there are the numbers that are currently in the handbook, so JV basketball is fifteen right now, yeah. And then the middle school basketball, if we have enough kids, we'll create two teams, we're putting that in writing.
Okay, I was gonna say, that definitely wasn't in writing before, so you're gonna, are those the numbers you're gonna go with, twenty-four?
Exactly. So it's the, the one at the bottom. So, uh, for middle school basketball, if there's one team, minimum would be fifteen, over twenty would be the second team.
So with the motion as laid out.
And that's financially solvent.
It is financially solvent?
To do that, to do it that way. That's, that's the number that we have to hit to be able to afford it.
Right.
Does anyone have any questions on it? What are your thoughts on this? I need some help with this one, because this is near and dear to me.
Well, how often would you review? Like, how often would you go back to us? Is this a yearly thing?
We've done it annually since I've been the athletic director, absolutely.
We have been doing it annually, right there.
You know, it's, it's not a guarantee it's gonna change, but we definitely have been reviewing the athletic handbook.
And most of this policy comes out of things that either we were already doing and work in writing, or weren't, didn't go well and we needed to change.
Yes.
So the vacation policy is a really good example of that.
Right.
Um, where we had some inconsistency in enforcement of when kids go on, um, vacation during school vacation. So, that was something that we changed last year to give the coaches a little bit more leeway. Some took it, some didn't. So now we're tightening it up. So, that's a process.
Cause different, different coaches did it different ways and it caused a problem.
Right. Had to be consistent.
Exactly. So sometimes, like you said, you just have to, as you're revisiting, you're saying, hmm, that just didn't work right. We, we need to, we need to look at that or tighten that up.
Mm-hmm.
So it's always good to, Peter reviews his handbook, Margaret re- reviews her handbook every year. So it's a good thing to do.
No, Chris, I know you take suggestions very well. My suggestion to you is, um, communication. Uh, you know, we, we've had some lack of that this year.
Absolutely, with the middle school basketball especially, yeah.
Right. Um, and just, I think situations occurred that definitely did not need to occur, got blown way out, you know, beyond what any of us wanted to hear. Um, you know, it's just easier just to put it out there first, rather than get it secondhand from the kids and, you know, I mean, personally, I thought the middle school basketball, you did a great job with it. Um, you know, but obviously, communication.
Your rollout was a little bit of a catch, right?
Yeah. Right. I mean, the kids, from what I saw, the kids had a great time. Uh, Mr. Cord did a great job handling the two teams. Um, so I just think.
Which couldn't have been easy.
Right. Yeah, he had a great helper. He did have a helper, which was great.
And he had an assistant, which you all approved, which was very helpful.
Yeah, so I just think the communication there could have just been a little better, but you know that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we wanna go ahead and do that? Is everybody fine with that?
Will we move the motion?
Okay, so, um, Chair will entertain a motion to, uh, recommend the changes to the athletic program as presented by Christopher Franco, with the exception of the reductions in minimum roster sizes before cuts can be made.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I guess you're good, Chris, thank you.
And I just wanna give a quick plug for the Spoffrey Tournament this weekend.
Okay, what do you wanna say about it?
Just at the Pearlie School, um, this is an annual event that we hold, um, between Georgetown, Triton, Newburyport and Penticottet. And it's always a huge success. Um, Georgetown will be playing at three o'clock on Saturday, so come check it out.
Yeah, that, it, it is a nice event.
And do they, there's no alumni on that?
Absolutely, yeah, they all come back and, yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah, the kids come back. That's why they do it this time of year, I think, cause the kids are coming back from college and they can come to the game.
Where can we find information about that?
So all of our, um, schedules are on mascores.com. It's like, in the last year, we've updated our website and it's so much better. Um, also, you can follow my Twitter, jmh_s underscore royals.
I was gonna say, Chris is Twittering.
Excellent, very good.
All the information you need.
Thank you, Chris, thank you for, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucia, so you got your buddies coming up?
Come on, gang.
Where's, oh, there's Heidi. Is Alex here?
Yeah, she's so good.
Oh, my goodness. What a good sport. What a good sport she is. I thought I saw her come in, I'm like, where did she go?
Someone was probably past her bedtime, right?
Oh. She's gonna learn how to be a public servant someday. She could be a public servant someday.
Well, I guess we could start with the, um, the handbook changes while we're waiting for the, uh, they do have a little PowerPoint for the, oh, there it is. There's a lot of whack.
Uh-oh.
There's the handbook change.
Ah, there you go.
We've got them both going, so I'll leave it up to you, which one you wanna hear first.
Okay, which way you, how, are the handbook, quick, is the handbook?
Yeah.
When we do the handbook and this one?
Okay. Um, so, the high schools, real quick, there are no, uh, proposed changes. And, uh, the middle school, um, the only, the, the big change is, um, we're going to allow backpacks in classrooms. It's something, um, that was generated from the student body, that they came to me, a, a couple of students had, had a big interest in it. So I sent them back to the student council, um, to take up their cause, which they did. And, uh, the student council brought it through the, uh, the subcommittee of the, um, school council. And, uh, came back to me as a recommendation, uh, that was a hundred percent supported by the school council. So all of these changes, I should say unanimously, uh, accepted by, uh, the school council. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, because, uh, it was proud of the kids, the way they did it, the way, it was a great lesson in, in government. And how, how the, the power of people. And, uh, it's one of the things that we're trying to cultivate in the middle school. So, um.
So what, what was the reasoning though? I don't get it.
Not to have them.
Is it just easier?
Not to have the backpack?
No, for them, like, why do they, what, is it easier for the kids to have their backpacks?
Yeah, they don't wanna go to their lockers as much. And I think they, um, that, that's what the kids in the high school.
Probably a trust thing.
Yeah, they do, right. So it's probably a trust thing for them. They feel like they're trusted, you know?
And the reason why they don't have them, they didn't have them in, um, the middle school. Uh, I, I, I think I was here when that happened and we, we had a couple incidents and it was, uh, it was kinda like these little kids carrying these giant things, we're afraid they're gonna hurt and they're falling over and everything else.
They could hurt their backs.
You might, you might wanna, like, just share with them some information about optimal weights for the backpacks.
Yeah.
I have one of my sons whose backpack is the most ridiculous thing. I have the scale down in our dining room, so I can periodically measure it. I think it's getting out of control.
Well, we hope to work with them, so they can kinda utilize both their lockers and the backpacks. I could tell you that Mike Anderson's gotta be a big proponent of this, because they kill the lockers up there, you know, stuffing everything in there.
Yeah.
So, this should save money with locker repairs.
But I think it's the, I think it's the principle of the fact that they were allowed to bring something forward and trust that, that it was gonna maybe be heard. Yeah, I think that's one of the things about middle school, it's hard to, you know, sometimes you feel like you don't know where your place in the world is, right? And you have kind of no power whatsoever.
It's great for them to learn their voice matters. They can make it matter.
I think that's the most important thing. Hopefully, the kids won't hurt their backs.
Right.
Cause it's a real, it's a real reality.
So that's change number one. The, the, the second one is more wording in the dress code. Uh, it's kind of, uh, obsolete language that we have in the middle school, uh, book. So we, we kinda, uh, synced it with, with the high schools, uh, uh, how it's worded with no per, uh, profane or distasteful language on clothing or, or on the student body or anything like that. And then, um, the sign out, sign off sheet was kinda different. We wanted to have a unified sign off sheet. Um, and we really liked the way the high school one is set up, so we kinda synced it with that. So those are the middle school changes. And then, um.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So when it said, uh, long chains or other ornamentation that is dangerous, so what would the?
That's being taken away.
I know, but why, why, why was that even in there?
Back in the nineties, guys would wear those long chain wallets.
Change on the pants.
Oh, cause I'm thinking of like this, and a beautiful necklace, I mean, these are in.
No, no.
No, 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 she's talking about.
Oh, so the, the wallet clips in it?
We're trying to remain stylish here. Stylish but safe.
You need to stay current. That's so funny. So that must've been a long time ago, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No more than fifteen minutes behind.
Do you remember those days?
Oh, yes, I remem, I mean, no, no.
She's way too young for that.
I'm glad you're changing that language then.
Can I ask, do we have a table of contents and page numbers on these handbooks?
Um, we have.
So they get posted on the website, people can know where to find information about particular.
Yeah, what.
Items of interest.
Yeah, well, we're making a lot of progress and I have to give all the credit to Mrs. Cudmore, who's, um, uh, setting it up, so if you click on the, the table of context, it goes right to the page, like a link.
Excellent.
You do a sorry.
We're, we're really, um, develop, we're, we're in the process of moving from, uh, a paper handbook to an electronic one, so we're getting all the.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep. Um, and then there are some things that are common to both schools, uh, and a lot of wording changes, um, the grading policy you already voted on. So we're just updating the handbook there. And we're gonna go with, with, um, uh, the sixth grade leaving. We think we can manage with three lunches now, which will really help us, because when we, currently, there, there is theoretically, um, no time between lunches. Because we have a, a, a two hour block that we're working with, with four half hour lunches. So, we actually let the kids go a little early, so we can be on time and it's, it's, uh, puts a big strain on the custodial staff trying to get the tables clean. And we have to keep the kids outside until we can, outside the calf, until we can, uh, get the tables clean. So, uh, we'll, we'll have fifteen minutes between lunches next year. So, um, we're looking forward to that. And then, uh, I have this gone now, but there were some price changes. So, uh, we incorporated that in the book. So that's it.
Well, that's little changes, that's good.
We've been tweaking it for a while, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just looking for my motion.
It's probably.
She's on her notes for so long this week, sorry. There was a lot to talk about. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the handbook changes for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, as presented by Principal Peter Lucia, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the other thing that I wanna talk about, actually, before I get to that, I'm gonna sneak something in here, I, cause you, I.
Oh, you didn't ask.
Yeah. May I talk about graduation next year?
Next year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He should talk about this very quickly.
Yeah, very quickly. So, the, the original date.
It might be on the calendar change. No, you know it is calendar change approval. That's what he's gonna tell you.
Yeah, um, so, the, uh, the seniors get out very close to when graduation was, like, they're gonna get out on Wednesday. And the school committee policy says first Saturday in June. And we didn't think that we could pull that off. So, in our original proposal in the school calendar, it was the following Saturday, which is a long time. A week and a half, where they'll be out of school before they graduate. Seemings don't like that, do they? So, um, we kinda, we, we, uh, we figured out a way where we think we can, we can pull it off in time.
So they'd get out Tuesday and then they'd graduate Saturday?
They'd get out on Wednesday and they will, they will graduate, yeah. So, we'll have, uh, the day they, uh, on, uh, Thursday, on Wednesday, we'll have, uh, so they'll have their last final and then we'll go into the award ceremony. And then on Wednesday morning, uh, they will have, um, a Wednesday night, they will have the banquet. No, wait, I'm getting very confused here. So Thursday morning, we'll have the, uh, Wednesday night, we'll have the senior banquet. Thursday morning, we'll have the award ceremony. They'll go from the award ceremony off to the senior celebration.
Oh, my goodness.
And then they'll be back. And i- it's really unfair, puts them in such a disadvantage in many ways, like trying to find summer jobs and things like that. They have a, a later start date than everybody else around here. So, um, we would ask that you would consider changing that, because we really think that, um, it's the best thing to do is to, to, to get them out at that point. We think we can pull it off.
And so how did you catch it? Or were you just, you knew that it was later and then you just kinda rethought it?
I knew, I didn't think we could pull it off, but I was kinda thinking inside the box. And the, the big problem is, um, rehearsal. And so we're gonna do some of the rehearsals while the seniors really are still in school. So, um.
What do you think about that, Vanessa, as a senior? Would you think that?
I like that it's like, can, actually, I think it's good that it's condensed that much. And like, if you do have it, um, a lot of rehearsals during class, it makes it a lot easier. Cause I know for us, our last day on June first, as soon as our finals over, we go into rehearsals as well. So like, I think it makes sense.
Cause you, you guys have it kinda tight too.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, the first to the sixth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not the same amount of time.
So I don't know if you wanna bolt on it now, or I, I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, we'll throw it out there.
Okay.
Uh, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the amended twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school calendar dated May nineteenth, twenty fifteen, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay, um, so, onto the middle school. So what I thought I would do tonight is kinda give you a combination of, um, the, an update on where we hope to be when the, um, the new middle school without the sixth grade opens up. And how we've been doing with, um, the NELMS recommendations and things like that. So this is a, a little concise, uh, combination of those two things. Um, uh, first and foremost, I, I would like to call to your attention, uh, again, that we adopted a theme last year. Respect, responsibility and community. And, uh, we did this because we felt that we were doing a lot of good things up there, but we, they weren't really connected. It was like, almost everything that we were doing, it was in a bubble. So we needed something to unify the school and, uh, an umbrella that everything would fall under. And the respect, responsibility and community. And the respect, responsibility and community theme was actually out there already. But we weren't tying things into it, so we had a, a uh, a vote of the faculty and what they wanted to do and they had a bunch of ideas, they came up with this, then uh we had a contest with the students to come up with um a visual representation of it.
They're great.
So um the contest winner is Julie Jean Grande, this is her design. And uh we transposed it on the, what is called the middle school stairwell. It's the one that's dead center in the school that comes up uh right out uh to the showcase in the, in, in the to, to the furthest, furthest to the right in the middle school.
Designed all three of them?
Yep, 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 so it was a, the contest was you had to represent.
All of them, okay.
And uh so she won and then uh Mrs. Cannon worked very uh
High school students.
Hard on this and some high school students to paint it and uh we did this uh, did we start it last spring? It was finished this fall.
It really looks nice when you go up there.
Yeah, it is, it is impressive, but um it is a visual representation of what we wanna be about. And so everything that we try to do comes under this. Some examples that, you know, our advisory program is all about this, um our discipline system is about this. We um have a new um progress report, if you will, that where uh the seventh grade piloted this year, uh we're gonna call it uh success reports. And it, it's, there are, there are segments, there's a, there's a part about responsibility, a part about community, a part about respect. And uh th- those are just some examples of how we, we're using this theme to tie everything in. So we will continue to do this as we move forward in the, in the school. So um I, I wanna tell you about some new initiatives, um they're based on, some of them are based on some recommendations from the NELMS report, I mean uh, I, I think uh I, I was here this fall to report on that and just to refresh everybody's memory, the, the biggest eh uh recommendation they made was to have an advisory program, so we are ready to go on that and we'll get to that in a minute. But um one of the things that we wanna do is really uh reevaluate uh what we do during team time when the, when the teachers meet at, as a grade. Um and that currently uh contractually is four times during a seven day cycle. So um as you know with the budget cuts that we no longer have team leaders, so uh Mrs. Manjo is going to facilitate most of the team meetings now, but it isn't gonna be a big brother kind of thing. It's true facilitation to foster more collaboration with the teachers because that's really what it's all about. Um, some of the topics that we do look at and we will continue to look at is the curriculum. Really emphasizing the backward design model of planning, uh more ideas about differentiated instruction and more strategies, uh a time to look at the assessments and the data that we use. And as always, to talk about student concerns, look at student work. In different ways we can involve parents in the school, that, that is really a, a big initiative that we've been working on and we will continue to work on.
Can I just ask, I, I understand all of that except for backward design.
Backward design is a philosophy um about uh how to, how to plan. And it revolves around starting at the end, so when the bell rings, what did you want people to know?
Results you wanna achieve and.
What is your objective?
There, what's, okay.
Exactly, so a well focused objective and then assessment so you can know how you're making progress toward that and then the strategies that you're gonna use to pull off your objective. And that is what we really strongly emphasize with all of our teachers every time we go into a classroom.
Yeah, we've been working on, we've been working on that.
So Peter, how will the parental involvement, what are you doing to um make that better?
Um, can we, can I hold that question, cause I think there's an, another part about it?
Okay.
So what's, what's brand new this year is because the sixth grade is leaving. We do our, our specials or non academic uh classes currently during three periods. You need three periods for the three grades, so with two grades next year, we can do that during two blocks. So that gives me a chance to simultaneously schedule two high school departments that are off during the same time the middle school is off. So that means math and science, for example, next year, the department head and the whole school's math department will be free at the same time.
Six through twelve.
Seven through twelve.
Seven through twelve, sorry.
Okay.
So one time during that cycle, they can meet as a department. That was one of the big needs of the middle school that we could only, because of the structure can only meet as a team, as a grade, so we weren't getting the, the departmental collaboration that we wanted. So we wanna really uh, we, obviously we can't do that for all five departments. There's only two periods that we're gonna work with, so we're gonna, we're gonna have an alternating cycle with, and always an MCAST subject, so this, next year will be math and science, the following year will be social studies and English. So, so when the obvious question is, okay, when that's happening and the department heads have the math and the science teachers, what are the English and the history teachers gonna do, that Heidi and I will, will take them and facilitate that. So uh we think that that's gonna pay big academic dividends. The advisory program, I'm gonna let um Heidi talk about this a little bit because Heidi is actually the chair. We, we set up a subcommittee and uh we got some help with NELMS when they came and we actually came up with these, these topics during um one of our PD days. And that was a big kickstart, so there is a, a committee, we asked for anybody that was interested. We'll take anybody and come in and uh, you know, uh let's put this together and develop lessons and stuff like that, so Heidi, you can talk a little bit about the work that you've done there.
Sure, so one of the greatest parts about it, I think, was the buy in with the staff, we did it together collaboratively and came up with these themes for each month. And not only did they come up with the themes for the month, but the staff together thought about, hmm, what would that look like? And they brainstormed the lists for us, so when the committee came together, we actually had things like, for example, um New Year, New You, one of the lessons that would be um contained in that month might be um, okay, let's reflect on where you've been and maybe set some new goals for the new year. It could be New Year's resolutions, um so what we're doing, the committee right now is um we're meeting almost every week now just to really um try to get the lessons done, we're doing it online so that the staff and you can see all of the work. And we thought that, you know, if, if Mr. Prescott was not a touchy feely guy and wanted to do a writing assignment, not to say that's true, but um there's maybe five different lessons that you can choose from that suit you as the adult. So um it's kind of neat and then that gives us opportunity the following year to do something different. We will have a seventh grade, you know, curriculum and an eighth grade curriculum so that they can make sure that they're not having the same experience. But we are very excited, we met today, um I'm excited to really uh see it unfold, I think the kids are gonna like it. And I really think the staff will like it once it gets underway.
So we're starting, thank you Heidi, uh so we're starting with, with two um meetings a month and we'll evaluate and, and see, we're pretty much locked into that this year. But if it really takes off, you know, some schools have it every day and so that would be the maximum that we would do it. We, we have to see how it, it fits our needs, but we didn't wanna, you know, jump in uh with uh you know, both feet right off the bat because uh people, it, it's new and it, and it has to they really have to embrace it and we, we don't wanna scare anybody off with, you know, too much, so we think this is a, a good place to start. So we are very, very excited about that.
So I, I love the themes, but can you help me picture the meetings a little bit more? The meetings are.
Okay, so um let me just look at this now.
Between and amongst how many?
Yep, so let me go to this slide for a minute.
Is that coming?
No, well, kinda, so I, I wanna talk about that uh with um so what we're gonna do is during the long block, the ninety minute block, we're going to take thirty minutes of that time and you would go to your advisory group. And you know, part of the, there are a lot of things that the advisory program does. But one of them is to establish this connection and rapport with the adult and the child. So it has to be the same advisor.
Right.
Throughout the year.
Right.
So it's almost like going to a homeroom.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's what it looks like. But we're gonna reserve three of those thirty minute blocks a month. The other third, the other block is going to be a team block.
So the other hour, you're saying?
No, so three days a month, three half hour, you know, one day, one half hour, that's advisory, another advisory, and then this team block. And the team block is an opportunity for the whole team, the whole grade in our school because of our size, we have one team per grade, to get together and do things as a group like student celebrations. That might be one of the avenues where we can get more parents in and involved. Uh assemblies, grade competitions, um guest speakers, class projects, all kinds of things. So uh we're only scratching the surface on that and I am uh very excited about this and I think that the teams are going to ask me in short order if they can do it more often. And, and we will do that, so that's something we don't have to wait for next year. If you have something to do, you wanna pull it off, we'll do it, so we'll make the time, we just have to tweak the schedule a little bit. So um how we do that in the schedule, uh we don't really have it completely down yet. But we know that it'll be some, because you are extracting thirty minutes of instruction from a period. So we're gonna do it in an equitable way that goes across the cycle and then repeats itself.
October, November, Peter will have the auditorium back, remember he couldn't do a lot of things that had to do with the auditorium because it was a teaching station for the high school music program.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have that at the beginning of the year.
Oh, you are, okay, so.
Yeah, but we're gonna have, so one of the slides I'm gonna show you is like the, what it's gonna look like up there physically next year. So you'll see that uh we'll have the seventh grade anyway because they're gonna there's another block we're gonna talk about for them in a minute, um they have the doors that, that are open. So they can have a big learning space in there.
I see what you're talking about.
So that's why the.
Joe is, right?
Yeah, yeah, and the other one.
I, I thought you meant the access to the auditorium, you won't have, you won't have that right away because they're not gonna start on.
Oh yeah, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that, because the theater room is supposed to be done before we open.
Okay.
I think.
Well, we'll just keep going, Peter, we'll figure it out.
We don't, we won't have it, but we'll, we'll make it work.
But you could, you could create a bigger space by opening that door, absolutely, that's a great idea.
Yep, absolutely, so that's um uh one of the ways in which we can enhance team collaboration, so uh we're really excited about that. Now, the enrichment block and I, and this, I hope this is the last time I use this word to the committee. Because we're gonna have a contest to rename this, because enrichment really, it doesn't say it all. Because a lot of things go on in this block, so we've uh piloted uh this program this year in the seventh grade, it was very, very successful. And uh basically what we have going on during this block is we have our enhancement classes where we help kids that need to catch up, so that's going on during that time. And what we used to do is we used to then break up with the four subjects and do some type of enriching activities by subject matter that you would rotate into. We're kinda not gonna go in that direction anymore. For a lot of reasons, one, we have the challenge of delivering the science engineering curriculum that we really can't fit into the regular science curriculum in the middle school. So we have used this period to do that and that needs to continue. So the kids get the, the, the content they need for the eighth grade science MCAST test. So that's gonna be going on during that period for all students and we're gonna do it in a way where um kids get everything they need by rotating around. Uh, we also, uh one of the ways that we uh are working to improve our MCAST scores is we've taken, uh identified some, a group of kids that were uh scored right below proficient down, that weren't getting any other services like enhancement. And gave them MCAST preparation second semester, so right in January, uh because the English test comes first. Those kids would get English uh MCAST prep and then after the English exam started, we switched over to math MCAST prep and uh the jury's out, we'll see what that looks like for our MCAST scores when they come out. But we think it's gonna help. And then that also gives you a time for, for a group of kids that can do some other types of theme based enrichment uh activities. This is a great uh opportunity to do cross curricular kinds of projects. At the same time working on skills like writing across the curriculum and other things like that. So all of that stuff's gonna be going on during that block, so we don't have a good name for it yet. But I think the kids are, we're, we're gonna put it in their hands and they're pretty good at naming things, so uh we're gonna give them a shot at it. So that's what that's gonna look like. So uh this, more to answer Bobby, the, the question that you, you asked, you know, we're always thinking of ways to, to look at how we can get parents more involved. Uh, we realize, we've learned so much, I've learned so much about the transition from the Pembroke to our school. And how I used to think it was just social a long time ago when I started. And then I saw it was so much more than that, that it was academic and then, you know, I continue to learn about it. And now I see that there is a parent transition uh that's very important too. And it, it's a big cutoff because parents are so involved at the elementary level and less involved in uh the, at the secondary level. And uh there are, there were reasons for that, as kids mature, they kinda don't want their parents around.
Prefer it that way.
Yeah, so, but, but we wanna, we wanna uh, I, I think we need to have more involvement, it, it's just, it's too black and white.
It's hard for parents.
Yeah, so, so we've been working to try to do that, we've uh increased uh opportunities this year. We, we have uh each, each team tries to find uh something, a quarter to bring somebody in. And, and it does, it's not necessarily for the whole grade, so teachers might have things going on in their classroom uh where they want parents to come in, I've sat in a lot of stuff. Mrs. De Frucio's done a lot of things, have career day, things like that, and we wanna keep those kinds of things going. We're gonna go to a new parent portal. If um, if I told you how many complaints over the years I've got uh about headline and how it works or how it doesn't work, um we get it, we're going to a new, new portal and we think that's going to be much more interactive and it's actually part. And it's actually part of the, our student management software. Headline was not, it was a third-party thing and it had a mesh and. And our grading software was also third-party. So when there was a problem, you call one company and they point at the other one and they go like this, nothing gets fixed. So uh this is all part of our student management software admin plus, so we think it's gonna work a lot better. And it's much more interactive and informative. And uh so we will uh work with that.
So financially, is it aligned with Headline, like the the new one?
It's a, it's a wash, right?
Oh, good.
What's the name of the new one?
Wes has been working, Great Quick.
A parent portal.
Wes has been working on getting.
Wow, that's a good name, maybe the kids should start thinking of a name for that.
So as a matter of fact, uh I one of our first, our very first professional development uh. Day or part of the day is gonna be on that, cuz we gotta get the teachers going on it right away. It is gonna be, they have a different grade, electronic grade book now, so they have to get used to it. Other kinds of things are, that plan for success that I talked about. Is it has a lot of parent involvement, it's a contract with students and parents in the school. And we're gonna really look hard at bringing student-led conferences back. So we used to have those.
Not, not, wait a minute.
No, no, wait, let me finish, so the problem with student-led conferences. It it was very different from a parent-teacher conference, and we know that we need that. But it's a a true student-led conferences is a time where students can display their work.
Show off their work.
Exactly, and explain to their parents what they're doing, but it does not take the place. Of that communication between the parent and the teacher, so we we wanna find a way to do both. So um. That's another uh initiative that that we're gonna be working on and and all of these things increase uh. Uh parent.
Involvement.
Engagement, yes. So this is um just real quick, what uh it's gonna look like. So the days of segregating the middle and the high school, of course, you know, are gone. Part of this project, uh the high school is going to be moving up in a wing. Of the middle school with the vacated uh rooms from the sixth grade. So it's gonna be organized in this way, we're trying to keep everything together with the eighth grade on the right. The uh seventh grade on the left, and those seventh grade rooms, oh, you could actually have one giant room. And uh those three rooms. And the teachers that teach both um in one area. And uh the uh the offices are gonna look a little different. Uh we're very excited about the concept of actually having a middle school office. Uh where kids can go in and not be on display because they're sitting in the. In the hallway, waiting for their guidance counselor or the assistant principal or whatever, so. They're actually taking the guidance counselor's office and the uh assistant principal's office and knocking that wall out. And that's gonna be an outer office, and building into the teacher's room. Will be the new uh assistant principal's office and the new guidance office, so um.
So will the teachers have a room?
Yeah, that room's huge.
It is big.
They're still gonna have a lot of that room.
All up there.
Yep, but you know what I learned the other day, walking up there with Mike Anderson, who who went went to the uh our school before the renovation. That that used to be the library, and it makes sense because the, if you go in there, it has a very high like cathedral ceiling almost with skylights and like. Why'd you do that in the teacher's room? So it used to be the library, that's the the reason, so. I am, I'm anxious to see what it looks like for the guidance counselor in the assistant principal's office cuz. Cuz it's gonna have like a.
Drop ceiling?
No, I mean, you're you're gonna look at it and you're gonna be able to see the top.
Yeah, the top of the other person's office, so.
Oh, I don't know. Because of the wall.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting to see, but do that, I'm sure we'll be storing stuff up there in no time.
No.
So that, that's what it's gonna look like, that's the new configuration, and the in the good news is um. You know, what in red is the lockers, uh there's gonna be a lot, no more sharing lockers in the middle school. So uh assuming that we get them all fixed, and the some of the ones that are broken, um well. We'll uh have a locker for everyone, so every child will have his own locker. I already mentioned thirty-minute lunch, we're gonna have a new special, we're gonna start off real slow, but we're gonna try to to introduce Lego Robotics. Into our our elective program.
It's exciting. Do we have a teacher for that?
Yep, two.
I bet it will be popular, cuz I know the summer program Lego Robotics was very popular.
Yeah, well, we do a little bit of that in the STEM club too, so that's a brand-new club that we have. And I, i- if you read the Gnome's report, they commend us for the the uh the amount of activities we have for kids. Um after school, but we're always trying to add to that and get better. And so we started the STEM club this year, and uh we hope to continue on to do that. So um that's, that's it.
That's good. You know, we've been talking so much about the Pembroke transition, you know. So I said to Peter, you know, maybe we could set something up where we could talk about what we're going to do for the seventh and eighth grade, so he did a great job. You know, pulling it off in a pretty short amount of time. Obviously, these meetings are gonna be a little longer, the next four, because we're trying to do everything. But this was a, he was doing his middle school handbook, so he said, I think I could figure out how to get something together, so he did a great job, really good job team.
Thank you.
I know, I love hearing the excitement in in your voice.
Oh, very excited.
No, it sounds it.
I am.
He's enjoying it.
I didn't say that.
It sounds like you're infusing a lot of STEM activities and curriculum and study, and and that's, I think, a good direction to go in.
Yeah, and I have to thank Dr. De Roche because she's helped us a lot with the curriculum and.
Definitely, definitely. So I, the only thing I wondered, Peter, if if you and Heidi might wanna consider trying to set up coffees. Because I know you tried that in the past and it really wasn't all that successful, and you know, Margaret will do them and she may get twenty and she may get five. But I think it's the idea of the fact that they're scheduled, that it's an opportunity for people to come in and to, even if you get. Three people who show up, you know, it's three people that came in and either learned some. I I just think, you know, it's something that um it it just might help, you know, if you're talking about parent involvement, you know. You have to stagger them, you can't expect everybody to come in at nine o'clock in the morning, you might have to have a couple in the late afternoon, early evening. But I don't know, what what do you think as parents with that spread?
Parents at that level, you know, when they're younger and at the elementary school, they're might not be working. But at this level, when the kids are more independent, they're working, so I would think something after school.
After school, yeah. But do you think it would be something that would be, you know, people that you know, would you think?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we could talk about that.
Sure.
Just to be more in tune.
More in tune.
More connected.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, because at that level, you're so disconnected.
Yeah, I agree, I was thinking about that, that, you know, along with bringing people in for s- special celebrations in the classroom. You know, it might be just nice to have an audience with, you know, the administration, cuz I mean, you put the things out with morning announcements and all that kinda stuff. And if people wanna talk to you, they certainly can, but if this is something that would just be a planned, you know. Um we do, you know, it says something, come in and talk to us, we wanna hear from you.
I think the the outreach, the offering, the outreach, whether it's taken advantage of or not, is is almost as valuable as. Twenty people in the room.
Yeah.
You know, and you can put an end time to it too, I mean, if you have other.
Well, you do, Margaret, right?
You can, yeah, it's an hour.
You have to put an end time to it.
Yeah.
Right, you'll be there all day.
Forty-five minutes.
Right, right.
Sure, yep.
She'll make muffins. Blueberry, they were delicious.
You could gotta cook some muffins.
And they were hot and warm, the butter melted them, oh, they were so good.
Yeah, no, that is a great idea, I think that would, that would.
Worth going, worth going.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And your daughter was so good.
Yeah, Alex, good for you. That's worth at least an ice cream. It's nine o'clock, not today in the booth.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. She's a good kid. Bye Vanessa.
Thank you Vanessa.
Thank you.
I'll see you graduation day.
You bet. Okay, so why don't we do the Pembroke transition? Margaret, do you wanna come up? We'll do the Pembroke transition. So I tried to give you a few things like as prep for this, we don't have to go over everything.
Can I interrupt for, is it possible to get Peter's?
What?
PowerPoint?
Yes, we'll get it, we'll get it to you, yeah, yes, I was gonna actually say that, that we should get it to you, sure, absolutely. Um so we have, we have a few things we put in, so I I think in the notes I mentioned to you that we did have a fifth and sixth grade. Fifth to sixth grade parent meeting, which was packed, the library was packed, uh which was awesome. And um Julie was there, Margaret, myself, Margaret really did most of it, did a great job. Put together a little PowerPoint collaboratively, which I included in the packet for you. Um so you you can see basically, you know, how we were trying to, we had anticipated, cuz we had. You know, Margaret had had some heads up from a couple of parents about the things that they were hearing. So we made sure that we were at least prepared to respond to those things. Uh in particular, I think the big, you know, question had to do with the grouping in math. Uh that was a, we we knew that was a a hot topic, so we spent, as you can see in the slides, we spent some time talking about that. Trying to provide a little context to it. The other thing we did is um we uh put together this little ex, well, we didn't put it together, we. Copied it, thank you, Margaret, uh this little excerpt from Chip Wood, who is a. Very uh famous renowned uh author, and uh really one of the co-founders of the responsive classroom, which we. You know, which we use in our schools. Um because this, this sort of gives you a context of, you know, the kids you're talking about are twelve-year-old kids. Um and, you know, and I like, we, what I like about the way Chip speaks about it is he breaks down. You know, what is the growth, what, you know, what are they, what's the classroom look like for kids? You know, what's the curriculum need to look like? So it just gave the parents a little bit more context, you know, that that these are twelve-year-old kids. They they are not little adults, they are, they are kids. And so it just, when we're talking about things like transitions to sixth grade and what are sixth graders about. Um they're about, as you see, social connections, finding out where they are in the world. You know, the academics that in the sixth grade, the real Paula Paula Utter calls them foundational skills. Uh you know, those skills are really being solidified, so that, you know, you start moving into middle school and you're really applying those kinda skills. But it is about social connectedness and and it, and so. Part of why we did it was we were thinking about it in the context of this notion of grouping. You know, heterogeneous grouping versus homogeneous grouping. And, you know, if you read anything in middle school philosophy, it does talk about heterogeneous grouping, and the one place that you might see grouping is in math. The other thing we did do is we put out some information to, I think I might have told you, I put out some information through the superintendent's listserv. Some questions that ask specifically, do you group, it, you know, do you group in math, if you group in math, at what grades? You know, how do you handle special education support, I, you know, things that we knew we were needing to know. And actually, the information that I got back very clearly talked about, uh actually, nobody said they group in sixth grade. Many said they group in seventh, and almost all said they group in eighth. And so one of the things that we did is we met with, which Julie was there too, it was actually an awesome meeting. We met with, well, first we met with Cory, Shanette, who's the math teacher, to to talk about, you know, what we were thinking about this. And then we met with Paula Utter to talk about it from the perspective of, you know, what what are the pros and cons of this? And if we, if we don't group, if we don't. Group kids into leveled groups that move in a, in a homogeneous way, if we. Cuz we don't intend for there to be no grouping. Right, if there are, if there are students, like in my classroom, even if it's heterogeneously grouped. In my classroom, I accept the fact that there are gonna be some sharp math kids that catch things quickly, and I may have other students who I need to spend more time with. But in an elementary model, that that's sort of how you do it, right? That's that's different than at a middle school or a high school model where they they do tend to group people more in like groups. Um so the more we talked about it, we we started to think about. You know, think the concerns of parents around this issue of grouping in math. Had to do with, well, if my child doesn't get into the top group in sixth grade. Then they're not gonna, if they get to seventh grade, they're not gonna be in the top group, and then they're never getting to algebra in the in the eighth grade. So in talking that through, Paula said, well, one of the issues that she sees is if you don't have those foundational skills. Then you you move, you move up in math and you really can't be as successful as you need to. So we decided that we would not level in math for sixth grade, but we would group as appropriate based on the needs of the students. There's gonna be a new math curriculum that Julie's gonna come and chat with you about in June. That has a lot of differentiation built into the program, so it would be easier for teachers to look at. If I've got this group that needs more time, what would I do to support them versus if I've got these kids that really get this? Because one of the things we did discover is that all the kids end up in the same place in sixth grade. So one would argue that some, some students. I guess they would say deep, you know, get a wider range. But the top math kids are gonna be the top math kids, no matter what you do, okay? And when they go to seventh grade, there will be, just like there is when they go to sixth grade, there'll be a set of, I guess, what we call them, criteria?
Data points.
Data points, and there'll be a placement test, so the kids who are gonna be the top kids in math are gonna test into that uh top section. Here's the interesting thing that we found out when looking at the data. That the group currently is two of the classes, two of the groups, the leveled groups. Around twenty-two kids each were leveled top. So that's almost forty percent of your class, top. Then you have your two groups about that same size that are doing the grade-level curriculum, moving right along, getting to the end of the. Curriculum by June, and then you have your fifteen or twenty kids that. Are continue to struggle and maybe get there, but they get a much less um robust curriculum. Which makes it di- more difficult for them moving forward because they're not necessarily getting the full breadth of the curriculum. So what's interesting is, if you look most places, you you don't find that that amount of of kids in a top group. Usually you find the top five percent of the class or something would be in a top group, and everybody else would be moving along at the pace that we would expect. But the the thing is, you can wave your child in, so that's what happens. So sometimes what happens is, some children don't really belong in the top group, but they get put in there because their parents want them in there. So that that also causes a little bit of a challenge, cuz now you have some students who may not really be ready to to do the rigors of of that. And they struggle when they get to eighth grade algebra, because basically, they didn't have those foundational skills. So in our opinion, what we wanna do in sixth grade is to make sure everybody has those fundamental skill, fund- foundational skills. Prepare everybody to do well in the seventh grade curriculum. And then for those kids, those top, that truly top group, maybe one group, one class of kids, that really should be that accelerated. They can still be on the pre-algebra algebra track. What we try to reassure the parents, and Paula helped us with this actually, because the average student, right, going to a good college. Would take four years of math, but certainly get through algebra, geometry, and algebra two. Right, that that was what, that's what we did, if you're gonna be a a math major, or you're going into a math career, you wanna get to calculus. Then you're gonna wanna be on that algebra in eighth grade track. Right, but Peter, you can still get to calculus, even taking, even taking, you know, algebra in ninth grade, yeah, so that's what.
Then you have to double up.
Nope, that's not how Paula explained it. Oh yeah, there's a little chart in there, if you can figure that out, yeah.
I saw the chart.
So, so basically, the way we're looking at it is, in sixth grade, it's not gonna, if you don't, if we don't level in sixth grade. It's not gonna define how successful kids are gonna be in taking math in the high school. When you get into seventh and eighth grade, maybe it ratchets that up, in eighth grade, definitely, which is why a lot of places will group in math, in the eighth grade. You know, but but most kids that will take algebra in the ninth grade, geometry in the tenth grade, take MCAS. And that's really what you need to be successful on MCAS, you have to have a working knowledge of those things. Then you take, then you, in eleventh grade, you take algebra two, and then you can take trig or whatever it is you wanna take, pre-calc. in, in eleventh and twelfth grade. But Paula said that a lot of times, what she finds is that, that students that, you know, even aren't necessarily in the top track in middle school, end up in high school, something just clicks. Or she said, sometimes what'll happen is kids will be on the honors track, and they're really struggling to stay on the honors track, and they're really missing some of the core things. So they're encouraged to sort of drop back into sort of the college prep, and then they get that foundation there that they're struggling with, and then they move right back into the honors track. So we wanted to explain to parents, it's not a terminal condition if you don't get leveled in the sixth grade. Right? That there's still lots of opportunities for, for really top math students to take off in math and do really, be really successful. Um, so we're, that is our recommendation, that we are going to group where it makes sense based on the student's performance, but we are not going to level students. And it was interesting, 'cause I think we thought we were going to get a little more pushback, or hear more after the fact about that, and we haven't. And a number of people came up to us after and said, thank you for giving us that context, because that's not, we didn't, we weren't thinking that. We, we really thought if you weren't taking algebra in the eighth grade, you, you weren't gonna be successful in high school math.
I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, that we talked about this, because I had a similar situation, thinking that, as my child is in middle school, and I did talk to Mrs. Utter about it, and she put my mind at ease, because she went ahead and did that whole, if he does this, this and this, it will still happen. And she made me feel so much better, and I know I had mentioned that to a couple of parents that I had talked to. But I do think having Mr. Shanette also at the sixth grade math level is great, because he does a really good job right now with the different levels of kids that he has in, I can only speak for the basic, the class that's on track for seventh grade, that he has, you know, some children that might not be as good, but are in that class, and he really does a great job keeping the kids
Yeah.
busy and occupied, but also still seeing those kids that have trouble, so
Yeah, we think he's gonna be a good
I think the parents will feel better when they, when they see that.
Yep.
Yeah, because we, well, we, we met with him also, and he did talk about, you know, that he, he embraces that model also.
Yeah.
You know, he said, I, I think that, that, that's not the way they teach now, you know, now they, they do have the leveling, but he's prepared to come into an elementary model where it's going to be a heterogeneous group, and then, but again, you, you, you know, you group within the class.
Right.
So I think he's excited and, and we are too.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, well, I'm sorry, Pam, do you have any question on that?
I, I, I mean, I, I don't really, I, I totally agree with the need to get all those foundational skills in place in the sixth grade, and I totally agree that Mr. Shanette is gonna be a fabulous teacher to do that. Um, I'm just, you know, looking at the, the pre-algebra in seventh grade for the top five to ten percent, and then algebra in eighth grade, the top five to ten percent. I'm not sure what's wrong with having thirty to forty percent of our students.
Cause they're not all there. They're not all there. They're there because their parents want them there. They're not there because they can do the work.
Well, that's bad. Obviously, obviously, having a student in a class just because their parents wants, wants them there, and they're not really, you know, prepared, they don't understand the, the basic principles, that's a bad thing. But I'm not sure, I, I mean, I would like to see, when we go this way, a goal of having more than five to ten percent, 'cause I believe that more than five to ten percent of our eighth grade students would be capable of understanding algebra and succeeding in an, in an algebra class. And, you know, I have looked at this map, I, I know this map quite well here. Um, and, you know, I, it, it, you really can't get to calculus here via this map unless you start with geometry as a freshman. I mean, you, you can actually, it, when, if you double up. But just following this map, and there's a lot of flexibility in it, and I understand that this, it can be done, but it's not easy to do it. And I just would encourage, you know, I wanna keep the expectations high. I wanna keep the standards high, and, and
We, we don't wanna, we're not lowering any standards. In fact, Julie, Julie's gonna tell you about the new curriculum.
I, I know, but when I see five to ten percent of, of
Okay, I, I'll, I'll pre-
Sorry.
I think I'm, I think I'm prefacing, I'm trying
Do I take it by surprise?
Nope, no, no, no. I'm trying to preface it that, that the, we will take any child who is capable. The goal is never to hold kids back.
They will have placement tests.
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct.
You know, what, one thing that Mr. Shanette talked about and, and Ms. Utter, it's not, it's not really even about competency, because many children are competent, but it's the desire. Many children don't have that desire. Some really love numbers, wanna do it, so they are, you know, they, they're right there, they're spending the extra time. Other children, they're, they're certainly competent to do it, but they just don't have that love for it. So again, I think that's what we're, we're looking at, where we wanna provide the foundation.
Building the love and the confidence.
Because maybe if they have time, they will develop that love.
But I mean, a lot of the careers of the future are gonna be based in technology, and they're gonna, and, you know, I've just heard Mr. Lucia talk about how important STEM is to the whole middle school.
Right.
Um, in the direction.
Well, we're doing, we're doing STEM, we're, yeah, we're doing a lot of plans for the middle, for the
But I mean, you really need those mathematical skills, and you know, someday if we wanted to add AP courses or something, I mean, for AP, you know, physics, you need to have had calculus and pre-calculus first, and I just, I wanna, I wanna keep students going. And they may not know, I mean, obviously, at this, at sixth grade, they're not, they, well, some of them might know what they wanna do when they grow up, but a lot of them won't, but they still need to be prepared for that time when they, when the light goes on and they say, oh, I really
Well, that's our goal, because what, what we're hearing is that, that sixth grade is that time to really deepen their knowledge and prepare them, so that they can springboard. Right now, that's, you know, just, again, based on our conversations, that children are not really leveled. It's, they're not really leveled in sixth grade.
Right, right, and I'm not suggesting that they, they should be. I like the sixth grade model the way it is. I'm not, you know, saying that I don't. I just want to be careful to keep the sta- the standards high and the bar high, so that, you know, our students really can progress as far, as fast as they're able to.
Right, right.
As they get older, in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade.
We completely agree with you on that. There's no, there's no doubt on that. We agree.
So I, just to go for, one step further, I just like to see that five to ten percent
I know.
Well, this, we're not, we're not
We're not, I think, I think, yeah.
You're trying to say you don't wanna cap on it.
Don't get, don't get fixated on that. It's the, the issue is
Well, I see the numbers.
I know, but don't get fixated on that, because that's, that's typically what you do see. You were ta- you're talking, see, the, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curriculums that are based on state standards are rigorous. Right? They're, they're rigorous. In fact, when Julie shows you the, the curriculum, they are all aligned tightly to state standards, and in some cases go above them. So the kids in seventh and eighth grade are still gonna get those general standards curriculum. In addition to that, they will get some pre, the pre-algebra and the algebra.
And algebra, okay.
But, but the whole program, everyday math starts with algebra in the first grade. It, it spirals through the curriculum all the way through, so
That they'd be quite capable.
Well, they're, they haven't been, Pam. They haven't been. They haven't been, Pam.
Right, 'cause those numbers reflect your experience.
Yeah, you have to, you have to understand, there was a couple of years, there were a, a fair amount of those kids were not passing algebra and could not maintain their algebra in eighth grade score, had to take it again in the ninth grade. So I think we're just trying, we will not hold anybody back. We will not limit the people who are eligible for things, but we will have criteria, and we will have expectations, and we will make data-driven decisions. That, that's how we, that's how we're, would you say that's fair with what we were thinking? So the only other thing that I, you know, you, maybe you had a chance to, oh, did you have one more thing on this?
I guess, I, on the one hand, you wanna foster the love of numbers. On the other hand, you don't wanna force people into math that they're struggling with, that they hate numbers, if, if the goal is to, to create the, you know, the standard to move future.
Yes.
Um, of that forty percent, how many are legitimately in that top group today?
I don't know that we know that. I, I would say
Is it five or ten percent today that are really top?
I would say it's a class. I think Paula had said it was a class, twenty-two, and there's close to forty.
Plus or minus.
Yeah. It's not to say that those kids aren't able to do it. It's just that
Just where they actually
They're really, they're, yeah, they're struggling to keep up.
Okay.
Um, not, not a bad thing to have high expectations, but I think you, you hit the nail on the head. You know, we wanna make sure that they're not struggling so, it's that balance, right? Struggling so much that they start to hate math, or feel incompetent in math, like a lot of kids do unfortunately. Um, um, so the other thing is, that Barry added to the website the new information. You know, as we F, as we, um, do these kind of reports, we, we add to our, our, um, website. And other than the, um, you can see the most recent questions that we responded to, had to do, will parents be able to pay for lunch? Which they will, we will have a point-of-sale system, which is great. Um, parents and students ed line, you know, where was ed line gonna be available? That was, that was interesting. I think our goal would be to have it at least at the upper grades as time goes on, but I don't think we're ready for it in September to, to put it in place, although the sixth grade teachers are familiar with it. So we, but I think we said for next year, we wouldn't recommend it, but it's something we'd like to continue to chat about. Uh, somebody asked about, you know, lockers. Will the kids actually have their own locker? And we determined, based on Courtney's count, that, uh, there are enough lockers for every, of course, Kay won't have the lockers, they have the Cubbies. But all of the kids will have a locker. We aren't planning to use locks. So, 'cause that was one of the questions before, like, are the kids gonna, you know, so we, we're gonna be encouraging, uh, students to not bring, you know, valuables that have to be, that have to be locked up. Um, will there be a student council? Yes, we'd like to continue. Margaret's way she does the council now, is anybody who wants to participate gets to. Um, the fifth grade class, oh, fifth grade class is switching. Remember, we talked about we wanted transitions? So after a lot of discussion and consideration, we did think it was a good idea for, uh, fifth grade to change for one subject. So there are five social studies themes, there are five teachers. So our plan would be to have like an expert.
Right, although that may, it may
Change?
It may change based on what the fifth grade units are. If it's chronological, it may not make sense to have, i- if the, um, if the social studies units are chronological, you know, we can't be talking about, um, you know, the colonies or the revolution, you know, after the pilgrims. So, you know
Yeah, that would mess up a little bit.
So that, it just depends on
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to really think about that.
The timeline.
But, but
Exactly.
And, and if, and we can always change it, and it could be a couple of science and a couple of social studies units, depending on, we can, but the, the concept was Yeah, just one, so one subject, and the teacher could be like the expert of that particular unit, and then everybody comes through that.
They used to do it for science.
Oh yeah, some did, right, exactly.
Yeah, social studies and science.
Right.
Like when Anthony was in like third grade, they did that, yeah.
Yeah, so we thought that would be, so it's K to four, everybody's sort of homogenizing in, you know, in the classroom, and then they'd have, the, the fifth grade would change for the one subject, and then the sixth grade would change for every subject, but the class will go together. And then in seventh grade, they mush all the kids up and they, they travel. So that's how we saw the progression.
So the kids are moving, not the teacher?
The kids are moving, not the teacher. Yeah. Uh, you know, I just discussed the leveling and, um, so, yeah, so that, that's, those are the new things. We still have things on our list to keep discussing. So we, we continue to meet on Fridays, and, uh, we'll continue to keep you, keep you updated. Margaret, does it, you have anything you wanted to add that was, you know, maybe we didn't?
So we selected, we, I saw that Ms. Seddon will be moving along.
Yes, that's great.
Yeah, she's very
She's very excited, but she, did she do student teaching or something in the upper grades? I think there
She was an English major.
That's what it was.
So she loves, and she's already been up like three times into the middle school.
Yeah, it's funny, because my son had her, uh, her first year, and when he saw her in the, in the high school, he, he was thinking maybe she was going up to the high school.
Oh.
So I said, oh, I don't know, but she had a, she had a big impact on him. She was great.
Nice. Well, she's very excited. Yeah. Margaret has a lot of hiring to do this summer.
It's gonna be busy.
She does.
The only, I just wanna reiterate, um, June twentieth
Oh yeah.
nine to one, that the Pembroke is open to the public. Um, we will put that in the newspaper. You know, Peter, I'm gonna ask you to send it out via your, you know, weekly notices or daily notices. Bring, um, Sharpie and a shovel.
We have that nine to one Saturday, yep.
Yeah, so people can actually dig. We want the plants to
They can dig a plant.
They can dig a plant. They can take them home, yeah. Cause they're bea- you know, it's beautiful plantings in those, in those courtyards, and once they take it down, literally
Bring a Sharpie and a puzzle.
Yeah, we, we can maybe get some Sharpies too. But the goal would be that you could write like a remembrance of something about the school, or you could sign your name, and, you know, just some kind of special little end of the
That's nice.
Yeah. And then there'll be tours in the summer, but, but yeah, really exciting stuff.
That's good.
Okay, great. So I'm just thinking for time, 'cause I know we have executive session too.
Yes. Thank you, Margaret.
I'm, I'm wondering, since the district satisfaction survey is something we wanna get out, do, do you want, should we talk about that briefly? And then, uh, the staff and student surveys was really more information for you
Right.
that we, we have to do it as part of our evaluation cycle, so I wanted to share, I think I explained it in the notes, but I certainly can provide more questions if you have them. But it, it, the concept is that the staff and students, uh, students will provide feedback to the teachers, and the staff will provide feedback to the administration. And so we looked at a lot of tools, decided on one, the state, and I, I think if you read them, you'll see there's a crosswalk, so you can actually see the reference to the framework. Um, so that's why, you know, the union and we felt like, well, why, why don't we just use those for a year? There were long versions and short versions. Believe me, the long one was too long. It was like, what was it, guys? Like fifty ques- yes, it was a lot of questions. And this way, we're, we're just gonna, we're gonna get the feedback and use the short form and see what we can, you know, what we can do. Okay? But Mike, if you pull out the district satisfaction survey, maybe we spend a couple minutes talking about that, 'cause we wanna get that out.
Yeah. All right, so we, uh, Pam, Carol and I spent the last several months, I'll say, a long time, um, kind of talking about the concept and then putting together the district satisfaction survey, and this is the current draft of it. The goal was, because there are school-based surveys, because there are a lot of surveys out there, and we don't wanna duplicate. Asking people the same question over and over doesn't help with the data. So the idea behind the district satisfaction survey is that the district level, the idea was not to ask questions about the middle school, the high school, or the elementary school. It was, as a, I'm gonna use the word customer, but as a customer of the district, how satisfied are you? Um, we do ask where they have students in the district to get a, to get a sense of, of what, you know, how they're responding to the questions. Um, so we came up with a survey of fifty questions with, which Carol's just suggested was a long survey. The, but it, it, it is time to
Michael, just, just let me explain that. If you're a student and you have to fill out seven of those
Correct.
That's a long survey.
Yeah, I thought it was very, uh, easily
Edit it. I mean, I've gone through, I mean, you can do it in five minutes. They're, they're not long thought-provoking questions. It's, are you satisfied? There's adequate technology in the district.
It's not a lot of comment.
Yes or no? Um, there are only open-ended questions at the end. Um, and it was, we, we tied it to the focus areas of the strategic plan as a way of sort of looking back at the old strategic plan, but also planning for the next one next year.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So we wanted your thoughts on, you know, any of the questions, 'cause of the timeline, we wanna work on
Yeah, is getting them out there.
Is getting them out there.
Right, which, what did we say was?
I thought we said, well, we, if we, we had, if it was last week, it, right, so let me, did I, did I put a reminder?
You put dates in here, but I don't remember where. May twentieth to June fifth, so that's not actually
Right, so if this was approved tonight, right, we would plan to, even if we got it out this week
Should've ASAP.
Yeah. Then we would give them a window, people a window, so we have to send a connect ed message out saying, really would love you to do this survey, put it out on the announcements, and then give people a window.
So, uh, Lorraine did have some great, uh, input, and the buses was, was a big thing.
Yes.
Which I do think that's
Which one was that, Lorraine? I'm sorry.
Well, Lorraine was just, I sent it out to everybody and just said, who, you know, any suggestions, and, um, do you have her list?
I don't have it with me, but, um, yeah, I think buses is a good question, especially
Just ask people about the buses, you know, what's their overall
Yeah, this is what, yeah, and just to translate some of her ideas, which I think were excellent.
No.
You know what it is? I didn't know if I could send it to the whole group, so I just sent it to
Yeah, she just, oh, then you send it out. Oh, Pam, and got it, okay.
Michael. I mean, and specifically, you had two questions that could fit into the safety and wellness area, I thought. Um, like, you know, one, just bus transportation is safe and efficient. I know, that's a lot. I mean, but, and I know it's very general, is that just to get people's general impression quickly, are they? But anyway, and then, I mean, it doesn't have to be worded like that. You can word, you know, word smith it however. Um, but, and then another one would be the school sports program, 'cause you were wondering about how people felt about that at Georgetown Middle High School, and there is a, a not applicable here, that you can give your child's at Georgetown Middle High School and there is a, a not applicable here that you can, if your child is in the elementary school. And that's the only place where we really have a school sports program, so it has to be clear that it's, you know, Georgetown Middle High School. Has helped my child build teamwork skills and develop as an athlete, something like that.
My only objection, I, I like the buses, my objection to that one, can we put that on the school survey rather than the district survey? I think it's a very good question to ask, but that seems like a, a Peter question more than a, if that's okay to add.
Yeah, we, we have some questions on our parent survey about the athletic program, not one like that, but send it to them. Problem is, we just-
Yeah, but in the future, you could definitely, you know.
Following the action.
You know, your suggestion about the ed line question, well, we're not going to have ed line, there's going to be a different program instead.
Yeah, but something that, that would maybe address.
So, what was that?
That's on our survey too, you know, because that's only for us.
Right, that's on, that's only in the middle high school. What she had just said, and I think it was just her thoughts.
Yeah.
Just as a parent thinking, well, it was just saying, um, questions related to sports clubs, should we add a question regarding transportation, buses? And then should we expand upon question five, we target the questions regarding ed line.
The buses, yeah, I, I- What were you thinking about the buses?
The buses, it was more around utilizing them.
Okay.
Oh.
To give us some more information to help us with some of budget challenges.
And we could, we could do that, much like we do the food services one in here. Are, are your children eligible for buses? Do they take the bus once, twice, five times a week? Like, we can, we can do it that way also, so it's only related to the people taking it, we can get a sense of-
Okay.
Yeah.
More focused on that, that's an easy one to do.
And Heather's question had to do with, I mean, I don't remember, it seemed like it was kind of long, yeah. So, her question was, you know, if you're doing a district satisfaction survey, do you just want to embed my questions? And then we'll just, we won't have more than one. But I think it, I don't remember how many questions it was, but I think it was, like, it would take another, probably another fifteen questions, so.
Yeah, I, I, my initial thought was no, that she should have her own separate survey.
She said she would send it out herself.
Yeah, but we just, the timing is important.
We have some of her questions on mine too.
Oh, you do?
I mean, so the last thing we want to do is, is ask the same five questions a hundred times and, and people are just going to get tired of doing surveys.
Right.
Well, they are, that's why I think timing is important.
Yeah, oh, of course.
You know, if we send all these surveys out at the same time, people are like, like-
Okay, so when, what is the timeline, do we approve it?
Well, we were trying to, if you, if you approved it tonight, you know, then we would get it out ASAP, but, you know, maybe by the end of the week, because it's the twenty, nineteenth today, right? By the end of the week and then give people, what, we were thinking like a two-week window.
To get the results back. So, if we do add in questions about the bus, like you had just said, you know, do your cha, do your kids use it, you know, how are we going to approve it that way?
Well, you just approve it in concept and we just put it into the survey.
Yeah, I think we should, I'd like the transportation.
Yeah, we can definitely do that and I can, I can shoot out the question.
Yeah.
I can send it to you, just to-
Yeah.
And can I just make a note on focus area four under safety and wellness, that question number twenty-two, you could just move twenty-two to the school lunch area.
You see, my child purchases lunch at least once a week.
That should just be on the next page.
That's a trigger, if it's, if it says no, they skip over that page.
Oh.
They don't get the school lunch question at all.
Oh, it's a trigger.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, keeping it.
That, that's going to work the same way as the bus questions. Is your student eligible for busing? Yes, if yes, they're going to get three questions, whatever the number is.
Oh, they'll go.
If they get no, they'll just jump right over it.
Okay.
You guys did a great job with this, thank you for compiling all the-
We've been really, we've been really worth it.
Yeah. I was so excited, I told them, I said, I've been wanting this for years.
You have, we've been, this has been on the to-do list for a long time.
And, you know, this would help us, like, if we have a retreat in the summer and, you know, maybe we do something with the administrative team, you know, for a day or something and we look over where, what the kind of broad general terms we want to go looking after for our next strategic plan and then this could be data that we could take a look at, because we'll have it back by then. So, that was the goal of trying to get it done this year and in time for it to help us with our next plan.
Should we consider that question though, around athletic programs, around, you know, would you be interested in like a practice player type and get some feedback here about that?
I don't know if people would know what that means.
Well, yeah, you'd have to, yeah, we'd have to explain it more, but I don't know, maybe this is an opportunity to ask about that as you look at the athletic program, you know, in future years.
Yeah, well, Chris should send out, Chris should-
Yeah, I'm thinking that maybe Peter could put that in his survey.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
If he's already got some athletic questions, he can, you can, we can figure out what we'd like and phrase it the way you want.
That's a good question.
Well, yeah, I mean, we all, you apply our personal experiences, but it'd be nice to get more than, you know, the four or five of us, because that may feel-
Yeah.
Right, well, I think that's the point, you know, is a broad, your broad brush.
Right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, I think this survey is meant more to help us with the overall district strategic plan versus particular practices, particular schools.
I don't know if I mentioned, it's also one, one survey per family. So, we're not asking parents to fill out three surveys, just do it the one time. And then there's a question of how many students, how many kids do you have, what schools are they in? So, yeah, we're not asking them to do the same survey several times.
Okay. So, at the end of the week, you're thinking this will go out?
Yeah, we certainly.
Well, yeah, we have, I guess we have to figure out the link and where it goes and all that kind of stuff and then we'll do a connect, I'll do a connect ed message about it.
Do you think two weeks is a long time to give parents? Sometimes a shorter time window is better, because they put a lot.
Well, if we-
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, what's our experience on-
Surveys in the past.
I'm getting responses.
What is our experience, do we get, do we do them online? And, and how much time do you give?
No more than two weeks.
They get longer.
You give longer?
Yeah.
I mean, I assume you get the flurry at the beginning, the fl, like-
Whoever's going to do it does it right away, I don't know.
We haven't had a great, or, we haven't had a great experience with receiving a ton of responses back. I remember we were, we were reviewing it and I said, okay, how many did you get?
Yeah, we get about thirty percent.
On surveys, thirty percent is about average.
That's, that's, yeah.
But you want to get eighty percent.
People do it right then and there and if they put it off, it's kind of-
You want to get eighty percent, you got to offer an incentive, like the kid gets a pencil or gets a free lunch or something like that. It's not, I'm kidding, I'm not kidding, that is good, am I right?
You're absolutely right.
Those kids will badger their parents for their, you know, for their little prize.
They could do a free ice cream, but-
It's true. It's true.
Heather, can Heather, uh, scare up like free ice cream, medicals or something?
Maybe some free fruit. Free fruit, free fruit.
Okay, so one is, so, um, let's go ahead and approve this. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the district satisfaction survey that has been presented this evening.
With-
With the changes that were-
The changes that were just added.
Okay.
Question include. With changes to be made in relation to transportation.
So moved, if I'm allowed to.
It's sick. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thanks again, you guys did a great job.
Well, Michael, I mean, we, we would agree, Michael did a lot of work on that development of the survey, so.
Absolutely, we appreciate that very, very much.
Yes, thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, now what do we do?
Financial review.
We have financial, some invoice approvals.
We have to be way, too bad.
What?
No, you're just letting, waiting at them and they were ignoring me.
I say, too bad.
They have to stay. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
So, we have turf field invoice we have to approve? Will this be the final? Should this be the end of it?
No.
Oh, yeah. We were still trying to get a final meeting.
We don't have a final bill from the contractor.
Okay.
We still have about nineteen thousand we owe the contractor.
Okay, two separate invoices we'll do together.
Sure.
Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve invoice five-five-zero-three-eight-three Pioneer Manufacturing Company in the amount of six fifty-six ninety, date April fourteenth, twenty fifteen, along with invoice number PS-one-zero-zero-four-two-nine-zero to Signature Systems Group totaling four thousand four eleven eighty-five, dated March sixteenth, twenty fifteen. Invoices, these two invoices with a grand total of five thousand sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents as presented. So moved.
Second, I'll pass that over to Heather and sign it.
Of course, yeah. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. How many do you need on this?
Three. So, the, the next agenda item is the third quarter financial report, I apologize. I missed the last meeting, we probably would have had this then, I've been out six- As you can see, the balance we have as of March thirty-first was, available budget was three-eleven, three hundred and eleven thousand. I checked it today before I came to the meeting, just to see what the difference is between March thirty-first and May, whatever, today is nineteenth. Um, we have about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars left. So, we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a month and a half. The biggest expenses that we are going to have now, from now till the end of the school year is our substitute lines go a little crazy, a lot of people have personal days to use. In addition, we do not encumber advisor salaries, coaches' salaries and things like that. So, I have been letting the principals purchase. We, as soon as we hit the April first deadline with special ed and we knew we weren't going to be responsible for more, anymore out of district placements, they have been able to stop purchasing again, so.
That must have made them happy. So, how do you feel with that amount right now?
We'll, we'll be fine till the end of the year.
Okay. So, this shows three-eleven, you're saying one-fifty-six today?
One-fifty-six today, yeah. And that's just after a payroll and a vendor warrant went through, so.
Okay.
But, you know, we did a, I, Donna Straight did a great job this year with special ed. And we really, if you think about it, at the end of the day, we have forty-three thousand dollars left, around forty-three thousand dollars left in special ed. That, again, with savings in transportation, because kids went into residential placements, but we made more money that way in circuit breaker, so unfortunately, but we're okay.
Right. Okay, thank you for that.
Well, subcommittee reports, I guess, right?
Yeah, let's not do that. I don't think we have any.
We have any, right.
Can I, I just backtrack to the school building committee?
Sure.
Um, there was a meeting on Tuesday night and unfortunately, I was not able to make it, but I did understand that, were you there for, for part of it, right? We talked about the failed metal roof panels, they're just a small, in one part of the, of the new Penbrook and they're going to be reinstalled and the final responsibility for the panels sliding down has not yet been assigned, but it will be the con, it will not be us per se.
Right.
That, that will be resolved and it's probably good that it happened this winter versus next winter, because next winter, it would be our responsibility, so.
Yes, it would be, you're right.
That's good. And then, did you say something Joan, about a shed, about the shed, the garage?
Mike shed.
Let's call it the garage.
The decision was made, I believe, through Peter Durkey to Mike Anderson that DRA will now design a spec and RAIT will be contracting.
Or to build one?
To build one.
Instead of purchasing?
Wow, that wasn't discussed at the meeting, so that must be new information.
So, we went back and forth with the prefab and then Mike got new prefab and then-
Bigger and-
Right, and Mike got an e, a text from Peter Durkey saying that, that, that I think DRA is going to handle it and that doesn't mean it's, I, I don't think they took a vote on it, it was kind of the consensus, that's the direction they're going to. Yeah.
The only consensus that there was at the meeting is that they, they wanted to have a good-looking building. They, they were not a hundred percent sold on the prefab, but Mike had found one that was nice and there were, there were a number of people that if the alternative was too expensive, they felt that they would, I think you would say that there was a majority of people who would support putting a, a prefab on there that was, there were some questions, could you change the roof to metal? Could you put the doors in another place? You know, so that, and so what they left the building was DRA would do a spec and then they would determine whether or not it could be built for a cost that was going to be reasonable. Now, again, I, there was no discussion about RAIT building it, so if there's, if there's further-
I'm not doubting you, Joan. No, I know.
I'm just saying, I-
That's what happened at the meeting.
We're reporting on the building committee and I'm telling you that that wasn't discussed and I was there till the very end.
Thank you.
So, you know, again, they, they said they, they really would, wanted to see something that could be built, but they were not sure what the cost was going to be, because to build something from scratch, but after you do the design services, they asked DRA to give them a proposal to des, give them a design. They didn't, they, they, they really needed to have that phase done, so. So, honestly, I, that's very new information to me.
I'm just trying to find, well, I'll find it tomorrow.
Not saying it's not true, I'm just saying, that's not the discussion at the meeting.
It was a text from Peter Durkey to Mike Anderson.
Okay.
But I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, so, yeah. It was a long meeting, but I think it, they approved some color changes and a few other things, so there was a lot of discussion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, we have an increase to the middle school student activity account because of Camp Kiev?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, they're going next week.
Yes, yes.
Um, okay, the chair will entertain a motion to temporarily increase the middle school student activity account maximum from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars for the month of May twenty fifteen for the purpose of processing receipts and payments for the students attending Camp Kiev. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have that Crest collaborative agreement approval.
Oh, yes, right. We do need to approve this again, really the only changes are that we have two new member districts as voted on by the board at Crest. Um, one is Drakeet and they, they're geographically very close to Crest, it makes a lot of sense. Um, and the other is Triton, which, uh-
Oh, really?
Yes, yes.
That's interesting.
They had been members of Crest, but then they didn't have, they weren't able to send a representative to their, to there, because they're also members of the North Shore and so Christopher Farmer, their superintendent, had been going to the North Shore. But now they have a school committee member who is willing to be a participatory representative and so they would like to join Crest. They actually have more students going to Crest than to North Shore, so they would really, so we voted them in.
Yeah, that's great.
But now, we need to just vote that, so that's the change.
Sure, just the amendment, okay.
Yeah.